Good afternoon. It's 1:36. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. Today is September the 8th, 2020. We are in work session this afternoon. We have a number of items in our work session today. We will hear an update from our Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation regarding a Lubbock music-friendly community designation. We'll also have a chance to recognize a number of city staff members, key members of our team. We'll talk again. We'll talk about the 2020-2021 operating budget and capital program. And finally, we will get a COVID-19 update. Prior to all that, our first item is citizen comments. And we have one citizen that has signed up to speak today, and that is Mr. Adam Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, please come forward. Good afternoon. Let me turn your microphone on there real quick. Okay, you're live.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm Adam Hernandez, currently living in the 7400 block of Avenue X in District 2. I am a governing board member of Lubbock Compact, as well as the Communications Committee Chair, as well as a board member of Lubbock Activists Driving to End Racism. At the past meeting, we did public comments advocating for a comprehensive fiscal impact analysis, which some discussion was had. So I do want to, once again, take some time to appreciate Councilwoman Sheila Patterson-Harrison, Councilwoman Joy, for bringing forth that discussion, really bringing it to the forefront, because we thought we were going to be ignored once again there for a minute. So I just kind of want to bring it up again, because it's really important. And we talk a lot about the value of things, and are they worth what we're putting into them? And so at the last meeting, a number of citizens got up and were not happy about the rate changes for the property tax. And so a couple of different ideas were put forth about where that money may come from as an alternative to altering that property tax. One of the things discussed was getting rid of the tornado emergency system, which costs around $1 million. And we concur with Councilman Chaddis when he said that if that $1 million for those saves one life, it's worth it. We are totally behind that statement. So in that spirit, though, because one of the other things that was considered was taking like a whole 1.06% off the entire operating budget to also find that alternate money. So $100,000. Is $100,000 worth it for a comprehensive fiscal impact analysis for Lubbock? So one of the things that I like to do in my roles as a leader, and wherever I'm a leader at, is to listen more than I speak, and listen, definitely listen to those who are way more educated on something than I am. And so these next comments I'm getting from somebody that was, that is much more educated on the issue than I am. So basically, what the comprehensive fiscal impact analysis does is, instead of looking at value lying where property tax lies, which is what cities tend to do, which, from what I understand from this source, is a little short-sighted, because property taxes can be altered a lot of times for no reason. And so there's a lot that goes into that. It lets us know, it looks at property values by the acre and not by the property. This negates what district it's in. It doesn't matter. It negates anybody's opinion about where growth is, and it shows us where things are actually producing and where they're not, and if the current development strategies are more beneficial to us than something else, or not. So $100,000 for the future of Lubbock to understand that going forward and to really put our resources where they could most be effective, I think is worth it. And I feel that if you were able to try to find $1 million, maybe you could use that creativity and that energy to find this much smaller amount for something that's really important, that could also go to help that neighborhood planning position for east and north Lubbock. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Just for your information, the city manager is going to, is prepared to talk a little bit later today about comprehensive financial analysis and some ideas around that. So we will continue to keep that discussion alive. Okay. That concludes citizen comments. We'll now move to item two, and first agenda item there is item 2.1. As I mentioned, it's a presentation from the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation. Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Brooke Witcher, one of our assistant city managers, is going to kick this item off. And we've got a great presentation I think you'll enjoy, as well as a guest speaker. So Brooke?
Ms. Witcher, before you start, I failed to mention that Councilman Christian is with us today. He's just joining via Zoom. So you may hear him. Randy, you there?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right. Good afternoon. Just wanted to make sure that we said hello to you. And with no further ado, Ms. Witcher, please take it away.
I'm not sure how to get it up there.
Do I need to turn you on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry. There you go.
There we go.
All right.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. If you recall, the council approved an economic development grant agreement with experienced Lubbock in December of 2019. The agreement laid out the goals and the creation of the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation, as well as the job description for the executive director. After an extensive search with many qualified candidates, we found the right person for the job. Stacy Keith was hired and began on April 1st, 2020. She's an experienced grant writer and fundraiser, and has worked with numerous nonprofits throughout our community. Most recently, she's been very instrumental in the Tornado Memorial Project. So at this time, I would like to introduce Stacy Keith, the executive director of the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation, to share some very exciting news of her recent accomplishment.
Good afternoon, Stacy.
Good afternoon.
Pull that down towards you a little bit, if you would. Thank you.
I'm on the petite side. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's an absolute honor to be here with you, to be able to share some really good news for Lubbock. I want to say, first of all, that it's been a pleasure to be the inaugural director of the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation. I feel it's a great honor, and the city staff has been extraordinary to work with, as have our city leaders. And so I thank you all. Also have to do a quick shout out to our team at Visit Lubbock and Market Lubbock and LITA. They've also been extraordinarily supportive on this project. I won't read to you from this, but this kind of outlines the way that our office is structured. I report to John Osborne, the president and CEO of Market Lubbock, and work really closely with all the arts and entertainment organizations in town, as the city of Lubbock itself. We've worked really hard on social media. We're working on a website, which we hope will be concluded by the end of the year. But in the meantime, we've had an active social media presence, trying to really promote some good arts programming that is happening right now. We met our first big goal, thanks to the council's support, last week before last, with Lubbock being certified as a Texas music-friendly community, which is a big honor in the state of Texas. It's an honor from the governor's office and the Texas Music Office. And so yay, we have a really excited music industry right now. And I think this gave them a big boost in morale and just created some dynamite momentum to continue to move forward. Beyond that, we'll begin now working on the Texas Film Friendly Community Certification, which also works the same way. We'll be working with the Film Commission on that. Groundwork has already started, and a couple of us will be attending the virtual Texas Film Friendly Designation Ceremony Workshop at the end of the month. And so that'll be good. Once we get that behind us, we'll be that much closer to getting that certification for the city. In general, we market, market, market. We try to really get the good word out about all the wonderful arts and artists and arts organizations within our city, and just continue to help in any way we can support those arts, musicians, and performance venue. Eventually, we want to have an arts events calendar, and that is also in the works in partnership with Visit Lubbock. And as we work on our website, we'll feel like that will be something that we can see. Right now, we're really doing a lot on social till we have that website up and going. For the Texas Music Friendly Community Designation, these are the steps that Lubbock completed. We hosted a music-friendly community workshop. This was done several years ago. And so they let us use that, which was a blessing since we were kind of shut down during this time. Establishing a liaison, which is this office, and so we did that. We registered with the directory. We're working on that. That's an updated directory that'll be available everywhere. It's kept through the Texas Music Office, and part of my job will be to keep that updated and fresh. They also like a collaboration with our 501(c)(3) nonprofits, which we're doing, and of course, collaboration with music education programs. And we have involved both South Plains College, Texas Tech, LISD, and spoken with faculty at LCU to make sure we're satisfying all those requirements. So we have a really well-rounded program. Finally, we put together an advisory committee. This has been a lot of fun. We are comprised of about 32 members, a great big diversity of musicians and venues, everyone from representatives from the Blue Light Live to Buddy Holly Hall at Performing Arts and Sciences. We have a grand variety of musicians as well. Joy Harris is among some that have agreed to serve, as well as Brandon Adams, and even our symphony leaders. And so we are really excited about this. We also have representatives from those others that you see from Texas Tech, from South Plains, and from LISD. And now I'm going to, hopefully this will work for us, I'm going to play our designation ceremony.
Hi, my name is Stacy Keith. I'm the director of the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation, and we are so excited to have been named a Texas Music Friendly Community. From performances and active theaters, the outdoor patio serenades, Lubbock is the best stage for musicians. This designation will place Lubbock on the map for great communities. Lubbock cares about musicians and venues, and is supportive of touring companies and bands who come to our great city. And our citizens love our music. This designation is invaluable in helping the city market itself as a hub for musical acts and touring groups. By promoting Lubbock's music legacy, first tuned by Buddy Holly, we are inspiring music lovers, as well as encouraging economic development for our city. Thank you so much for joining us today for our virtual certification ceremony. Now let's join as Chip Adams, with the Texas Music Office, presents our mayor, Dan Pope, with the certification.
Hello, Mayor Pope. My name is Chip Adams, and I'm the Community Relations and Outreach Specialist for the Texas Music Office. And I'm really thrilled to be taking care of this today. Some really important business to get Lubbock certified as a music-friendly community. Might be good to explain a little bit about the TMO up front. We're an economic development and tourism element of the Office of the Governor. And we're also celebrating our 30-year anniversary this year. So it's even more meaningful to be bringing in cities within the TMO family this year to help us celebrate being around for 30 years. And I've got to say, it's been an absolute pleasure working with Stacy Keith, the director of the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation, over the past few months. Her enthusiasm on wrapping this up has been infectious. It's been wonderful. And I'm looking forward to continue working with the city of Lubbock. You know, with y'all's rich musical history, I am so pleased to welcome y'all to our growing family of certified music-friendly communities. You guys now get to join Fort Worth, Austin, San Antonio, Denton, Lyndale, Stephenville, Conroe, San Angelo, Nacogdoches, Abilene, McKinney, Waukesha, Alpine, and Waco. So it's quite a great group, and really happy to have Lubbock joining us now.
Wow, thanks, Chip. That's fantastic. On behalf of the 270,000 Lubbock residents, thank you. Certainly on behalf of the Lubbock City Council and our leadership from Stacy Keith and our cultural foundation. It's a great day. I like to say that Lubbock is the original live music capital of Texas. With all due respect to that city on the Colorado, where you are, you know, whether your Texas music is Bob Wills, or C.C. Tom, or Willie Nelson, or our part of the world, Buddy Holly, Texas music is really, really important. In fact, I'm today at the Buddy Holly Center, one of the top tourist designations in Lubbock. You may see some of the memorabilia behind me today. And we're very excited to earn the Texas Music Friendly Community Certification. It's important to us. Live music and music of all types are very critical to the social fabric of our community. On behalf of our city, I'm deeply honored and thankful for you. Brendan, tell the governor thank you also. We appreciate Governor Abbott's leadership. And we're so proud to earn this award. It's something that we will, we'll talk about every time we get a chance.
Congratulations, Lubbock, for being noted as a music-friendly community in the state of Texas. That's a great award, and thanks to the state of Texas for recognizing Lubbock for its great support of music musicians and things that are going on with this great West Texas music scene.
Hello, my name is David Cho, music director of the Lubbock Symphony.
And I'm Galen Wickson, president and CEO of the Lubbock Symphony.
On behalf of the Lubbock Symphony, I would like to congratulate Lubbock for being named music-friendly community.
Let's keep making music together, Lubbock.
Hey, everybody. Josh Abbott here. I'm very excited to hear that Lubbock has been named a music-friendly city in the state of Texas. That's something we already knew, but it's nice to have the official recognition. I'm proud of you. Thanks for supporting live music.
Congratulations, Lubbock, from everybody here at the Blue Light Live on Buddy Holly Avenue. Can't wait to see what Lubbock music has in store for the future.
Yo, yo, it's your boy Booker Bradshaw checking in. I just wanted to take a quick second to give Lubbock, Texas, a big shout out on a music-friendly designation. I know that's huge for the city. Feels really to finally see the hard work pay off. A-06, let's keep pushing.
Congratulations on behalf of the CH Foundation on being named a music-friendly community. Buddy's looking down with pride.
Hi, guys. Scott Ferris here from the amusement park recording studio. Congratulations, Lubbock, on being determined a music-friendly community in the state of Texas. Lubbock has always led music in this state, and I'm incredibly proud to be a part of this community.
Congratulations, Lubbock. You are now a Texas music-friendly city.
Hi, I'm Lyrica Jones with Luca, the Louise Hopkins Underwood Center for the Arts, and we just want to say congratulations, Lubbock, for receiving a music-friendly city designation. Good job.
The historic Cactus Theater showcases local, regional, national, international talent on its historic stage. We're so proud of this new designation as a music-friendly city, and we welcome all through our doors.
Hey, I'm Hannah Jackson. Congratulations, Lubbock, Texas, for your Texas music-friendly designation. I think our buddy would be really proud.
From your friends at LIPA and the Buddy Holly Hall, congratulations on achieving the Texas Music Friendly Certification.
Hello, I'm Chris Smith.
I'm Roger Landis.
From the TTU Vernacular Music Center. And we're thrilled that Lubbock has been officially named a music-friendly city.
Lubbock has long been and continues to be the home of many awesome and hard-working musicians, singers, and songwriters. The Buddy Holly Center is pleased that Lubbock has been recognized as a Texas music-friendly city.
Hi, this is Jerry Serrano, and I want to congratulate you, the city of Lubbock, on your music-friendly designation.
Congratulations to Lubbock, Texas, for being named a music-friendly community. From Studio West and Rockin' Box 33.
To the music-friendly city of Lubbock, Texas, congratulations from Brandy Guitar Studio.
Hi, I'm Jenny Dale Lord, proud Lubbock native. Congratulations, Lubbock, on your music-friendly designation.
Hi, I'm Kathy Joel, singer-songwriter and owner of KSSL Radio, where we're proud to play our local independent country music artist. And Lubbock, congratulations on your music-friendly designation.
Howdy, friends. Kerry Banks here, songwriter, musician, author, and owner of Bank on the Music LLC, a proud member of the Lubbock, Texas, music community, a music-friendly city.
Lubbock.
Joy Harris here. I'm so proud to be a Lubbock musician. Congratulations on your Texas music-friendly designation. Ray, on.
As you can see, we have some very excited music friends in our community that are really excited about this. And so I wanted to tell you again, thank you for your support. They appreciate it. I appreciate it. We all do. And so I will take questions, and then I have something to present to Mayor Pope.
Okay, Council, questions or comments for Ms. Keith? Ms. Joy?
Ms. Keith, you mentioned the cultural arts, I guess, calendar. To me, that's really important, because we didn't have, for a period of time, a coordination of events.
And so while we're kind of in this lull that we're in, I would really like to see that come to the forefront and become a very important part of scheduling for all of the organizations.
Yes, ma'am. I totally agree. And that's going to be a key component of our website that we're developing. And so I think we're going to, so far, we've had wonderful collaboration between Visit Lubbock, the Lubbock Arts Alliance, and Civic Lubbock. So I think that we'll be able to pull all that information together and start to help with that. So I agree.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other comments or questions? Mr. Chaddis. Thank you, Mayor. 32 members on the commission?
We do.
How do you manage to put 32 people together at one time?
It's enormous. Well, because so, so very many people had told me, you need to talk to Don Caldwell, you need to talk to Scott Ferris. And everyone that I called jumped in to help. And everybody that I called said, how can I help? I want to be part of this. And so how can you say no to that? I feel like that they will probably kind of do some subcommittees and divide them up into their interests. But it was an amazing, it just really shows me the spirit of the music industry here and how badly they wanted to get this going. So it's been fun.
Thank you. Great talent. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir, Mr. Chaddis. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to walk down. I think Ms. Keith says something.
Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to present the Texas Music Friendly Designation for Lubbock, Texas. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for your, Ms. Keith, Ms. Witcher, thank you for your hard work. We're excited about that. Let's move to, back to our agenda. We've got a, it's been, it's been quite a while since we've recognized any of our staff. As you know, we've tried to, as we go through the year, as we bring new members on, or as people are promoted, or as they earn special designations, we like to try to take that opportunity to congratulate them and do it publicly. And for, well, let's just round it to six months. It'll be six months on the 12th, I think, at least in my mind. That was the day it all got going. We have not done any of that. And so we thought it was appropriate today to let the city manager do some special recognition. I think it'll be good for our team that's here, for folks that are watching at home. And there's a lot to be proud of, a lot to celebrate. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We do have a brief presentation. I believe we're on the east input today. See if that comes up. There we go. Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask the staff members to come up one at a time. We're going to talk about them a little bit, congratulate them for their accomplishments. And then at the end, Mayor, if it's okay with you, we'd like to get a group photo of them in front of the dais here. So we'll start with Colby. As Colby starts his way up, Colby will be one of the newest faces that you'll see here today in Citizens Tower. Colby recently completed the recruitment process and was selected as your new director for Parks and Recreation. So you can see there, August the 17th. He's pretty new to us. Tarleton State graduate, has 20-plus years of experience managing parks, and has been at three cities prior to joining us here. And most recently, of course, that was with the city of Victoria. So Colby, welcome.
Thanks, sir.
If you don't mind, stand off to the side, and we'll get your photo here in a minute. I don't know why that keeps flashing. Let's see here. We'll start Joe back up. So Mayor, Council, maybe from behind the magic curtain, but I think we're all very familiar with Joe Mouti and what Joe's been doing for us as we've gone through the COVID-19. Joe is one of those promotional opportunities that the mayor mentioned. Excuse me. Joe became our director of emergency management on May the 8th. Prior to that, he'd been brought in as the newly-created deputy, a position the council gave us to start building a bench. And following Mr. Parchman's retirement, Joe was the obvious, visible, and proven choice to take over as our director of emergency management. You can see on the screen the various credentials that Joe brings with him. He's already working through the emergency management certification process and brings numerous law enforcement certifications with him as well. So Joe, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And staying in that theme of emergency management, we'll ask Justin to come up. Mayor and Council introduced to you Justin Musgraves. Justin, very recently, was promoted to become the deputy director of emergency management. Justin's a long-serving member of your Lubbock Fire Rescue Team. Justin brings tremendous certifications to you, lots of experience in emergency management through his service with the Texas Forest Service. So Mayor and Council, you're in very good hands in your emergency management department. I don't think the irony is lost on me that we have made these changes in the midst of what's going on with COVID-19, and yet these gentlemen have kept us running and running very well. So Justin, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring Mr. Alan Martin up, also a gentleman with whom we've had tremendous recent experience. Alan, though, is your new fire marshal. Alan's your new fire marshal. Came to us in a unique, unique path. Alan started out as a middle school teacher, and that was his life path at the time. He was able to be hired onto Lubbock Fire Department, now Lubbock Fire Rescue, in November 2005. Spent his first five years as a firefighter, and then moved into Fire Prevention Division. So Alan also, as you can see on here, brings not only his fire credentials, but also his law enforcement credentials. So a fire marshal, the fire marshal's office, they serve both of those roles. Most recently, Alan and his team have become experts in what we call the Educate and Encourage Campaign, which is to help work with local businesses, local events, and others, as we work safely through reopening the Lubbock economy. You see on the bottom of the screen there, the Fire Executive Management Training. You also see the National Fire Academy. Those are both very prestigious institutes for further training and education. They're both difficult to get into, and Alan is doing both of those on our behalf. So Alan also promoted in the midst of what we've been doing for the last six months, and cannot thank him and his staff, the entire team, enough for what they've done for us. Alan, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll bring up one that is no stranger to the council. This is Ms. Kelly Campbell. Kelly, of course, is your Executive Director at the Lubbock Smith, Lubbock-Preston Smith International Airport. Kelly's been with the city, been actually with the airport since March of 2001. Began in the accounting department, a role she continues in keeping great track on all of the dollars that run in and out of the airport. Kelly has been your Executive Director for a while, but she's up here today, Mayor and Council. I think sometimes we forget, the city of Lubbock is fortunate. We have numerous people on staff that are certainly experts for what they do for us, but that expertise is recognized across a region, across a state, or across the nation. In this case, Ms. Campbell is the new Chair of what we call AAAE, the American Association of Airport Executives. She is leading that organization for the entire country right now. So, Kelly, congratulations.
Thank you.
Bring up Ms. Brenda Haney. And we'll continue in the same vein. Brenda has been introduced to the council previously. She did start in September of 2019. Just like Colby, she came to us through a competitive process, held herself head and shoulders above the competition. We were able to get her out of Irving into Lubbock, so that was a great, great move for her, absolutely a great move. Regardless, Ms. Haney is now the President of the Solid Waste Association of North America. So her experience, her skills are also recognized really totally across our industry. We're very fortunate to have her. So Brenda, congratulations and thank you. We're gonna move into a group of people who are really working their way up through their careers, who are in that process of attaining certifications, various credentials. We'll begin with Brandon, Brandon Sherwood. Brandon is a Commercial Plans Examiner for the city. Piece of the bio they gave me that I did not know prior to today, he is a second-generation employee, not only of the city, but second-generation employee of the city in the same department. So, Brandon, that's tremendous. Brandon has recently finished the process to obtain his Building Plans Examiner certification from the International Code Council. So that's a huge step for him. That is expertise that we now have on staff that works with our building community and keeps that piece of the economy spinning. So, Brandon, congratulations. Thank you very much. We appreciate what you're doing. Are we gonna get a third generation?
I don't know.
I'm working on recruitment right now. Staying in the same thought, we'll ask Ms. Whitley Green to come up. Thank you. Whitley, as you can see, holds an engineering degree in Applied Material Sciences. She has not been with us very long, just a little over a year. She's been in the Building Safety Department, a Commercial Plans Examiner. She has also recently obtained her Building Plans Examiner certification from the ICC and thus has been promoted to Senior Commercial Plans Examiner. So, Whitley, congratulations. We appreciate what you're doing for us. While Brack comes up, I get to tell stories, right?
You have special permission with Brack.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go easy on Brack today. Brack, long, long-serving, very dedicated employee of the city. You can see he began with us in 1996. Brack has been here a while. Between Brack and Linda, they have kept control of all of the city's accounting. They do a phenomenal job. You see that each year when we bring forward what we call the audit or the caffer as it comes in. Also participation in the budget process and other deals. Brack, after numerous years with the city of Lubbock, took it upon himself to step out and to go through the process of standing for his CPA exam. That is a difficult exam often for folks when they first come out of school. Brack's been out of school just a day or two, maybe three, four. But nonetheless, again, Brack has really put himself through one of the more difficult things you will see in a professional's career. And he has come out of this, come out of that process and is now our newest Certified Public Accountant. So, Brack, congratulations. Man, I know that was a ton of work. We really appreciate it. It's, of course, a benefit to you, but it's obviously a benefit to the city. So, Brack, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If Kiara Morgan could come up? We lose one blue?
Yes, we lost one.
We lost one. Okay. How about Jesse? I know he's here.
Okay. Mayor, counsel, Jesse Montez Jr. is a buyer in your purchasing department, a buyer three. Jesse's got a bachelor's degree in public administration from the Forbes School of Business, and he began with us in March of 2018. Quickly promoted from buyer to buyer two, and has most recently passed his Texas Contract Management Certification. So this is actually through the state of Texas. This is also a big achievement. He has been promoted to buyer three as a result, and we are very pleased to have him and his newfound certification and skill working on our behalf. We manage, I say we, they, manage tremendous amount of contracts and a tremendous amount of public money that we're putting to the benefit of the community. And he and Kiara are doing a great job for us. So, Jesse, congratulations and thank you. So if you'll stay there, the rest of the group, if y'all don't mind, let's come back up in front of the dais.
While they're coming back, please join me in congratulating all of them. Yeah, go ahead and fill in there, Whitley. Brack won't get, won't bite you too bad or anything like that. There you go.
Mask off, or just...
It's a little uneven.
Okay, everybody hold their breath when you take your mask off.
Can you go to the other side, please? I'm sorry, you're sitting on me.
One, two, three for me.
Thank you all for everything that you do for us. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to echo your comments, Mr. Atkinson, and I'm particularly thankful for Justin and Joe and their role in emergency management. Thanks for what you guys have been doing for 180 days now. We appreciate it. I'm also thankful for Allen and his team at the Fire Marshal's Office. They've found themselves in some really difficult spots in the last six months, and they've handled it with a remarkable amount of grace. And my phone is yet to ring, and it rings a lot. My phone is yet to ring with a complaint about the way a citizen or a business has interacted with our Fire Marshal's Office when they've gone out and tried to help us with COVID-19. And from the very early days where this was new to us until this last weekend, and we continue to get reports, whether it's as we help bars reopen and try to do it safely. A big part of getting our economy restarted and doing it in a responsible way falls to Allen and his team, and certainly that, you know, the folks from, the men and women at LPD who get called out also. But you guys have done a great job, and I'm very thankful for your effort. And I know, I know the council's thankful for that also. I'll open the floor for any other comments, but I wanted to make sure we started with that before you guys slid out of here. Counsel, anything from you guys? Mayor Protem?
While we're talking about certain individuals, I'd like to also thank Brenda Haney. Fantastic job, what you've done for us, Solid Waste. Thank you. We're so glad you're here.
Ms. Joy?
Well, I'm very pleased to have Colby here with, heading up Parks and Recreation. I told him, when I met him the first time, he would hear from me about soccer, and I suspect he will. But congratulations, and he's a Tarleton grad, so good job.
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks again. Once again, congratulations. Okay, we'll move now to item 23. 23 is a presentation and discussion of the proposed FY 2021, excuse me, 2020, 2021 Operating Budget and Capital Program. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We have available today the presentation that we gave you last Wednesday. Seems like a while ago, but last Wednesday, prior to your public hearing. Counsel, I thought I would begin today, though, by addressing some of the really good comments that we've had both last Wednesday and again today on the Fiscal Impact Analysis, or Comprehensive Fiscal Impact Analysis. It's referred to in both ways. Staff put together some background information. We've looked at some more of it. So I'm gonna walk through that relatively briefly in with a recommendation, and then certainly take any questions or comments that you may have. So as has been noted, the concept of the Fiscal Impact Analysis does originate, it is contained in Plan Lubbock 2040. It shows up in several places, Implementation Matrix, and it shows up in Chapter Three. And in Chapter Three, it shows up a couple of different times. Under the Implementation Matrix, page 223, letter F, "Reexamine and Update Current Annexation and Growth Policies." So not necessarily related to the Fiscal Impact Analysis, but since the comp plan was written and approved, the state legislature has changed your annexation policies. And the simple way to describe that is your annexation policy is you will only annex on request. So what has been done in the past is no longer possible. But the growth piece of that is, of course, relevant. Subpoint 18 says to pursue a comprehensive fiscal impact analysis of your existing development patterns to inform your future growth policies. And that language comes right out of the matrix. And it is slotted in the two-to-five-year period. So remember that your Implementation Matrix, it's arranged first by priority. That matrix identified a series of items, and it said, these are the first things that you must do. And then it fills in, on a longer time horizon, other things that you can do. The Fiscal Impact Analysis is not listed as priority, not because it's not important, it is, but because I think it actually has to build on something that is a priority before it would be appropriate to do it. So, moving off of that, wanted to talk a little bit about the costs. So we've had several suggestions and comments. We have gone back and talked to two firms that do this, one of whom we're very familiar with. Scenario-based, comprehensive fiscal impact analysis models are estimated to run us between $100,000 and $125,000 from the first firm. Now, important, that dollar will buy you into what I talked about a week ago as the model. And that model's where you take a different or a new project, feed it in, change assumptions, and see what you get when it comes out. The other one is a firm with which we have not worked, but they do work with Texas cities. On the low end, they were at $65,000. On the high end, they were at $120,000. Now, a key deal, you have to have very, very finite and very detailed what's called cost of service. You've got to have that. Now, we are getting some of that information through what's being done with your Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, the Impact Fee Group, and that'll soon wrap up. But that cost of service will change with each and every new proposal. Where it is geographically, where it fits with existing infrastructure, or how far it might be, is important to do. When we look at these, there were some quotes today also from a firm with whom we're familiar, and I think it's important. You can do it on a parcel level, individual tax parcel. So think of a single-family residential lot versus a commercial note at the corner that might be a single parcel. Each is one. The size and the values are dramatically different. So some do it on parcel, some do do it on an acre. So we draw one-acre blocks, aggregate that appraised value, and these all do begin with appraised value, and we come up with a value per acre rather than a value per parcel. Probably helps smooth data a little bit, but there's always components of it that you've really got to look at. Are you holding out tax-exempt parcels? Think of nonprofits, think of churches, think of government facilities, think of parks. We have areas of town in which substantial parts of your acreage are parks. They're really some of our crown jewels. They don't carry a dollar value. They carry a tremendous value, though, to the overall growth, development, and health of our community. Some models will look at sales tax revenue produced, whether it's by parcel or by acre. Some will not. But all of those are tools that you ultimately select at the time you move forward with that Fiscal Impact Analysis. I would note that your Comprehensive Plan, and several of the firms that specialize in this, will all call out and note that this is a piece of future development. It is not necessarily the sole determining factor or the sole driver in new development. In fact, one of the comments is that reliance on a Fiscal Impact Analysis alone is not recommended. Even if a negative finding is made in the analysis, decisions, and we're referring to annexation, zoning, subdivision of land, may still be appropriate, taking into consideration quality of life and quality of place. And in fact, the exact quote that comes out of your Comprehensive Plan, "The city should be prepared to consider annexation of areas with less than favorable impact implications if unique health, safety, environmental, general welfare, or other factors are significant enough to override financial considerations." So the financial impact analysis is going to boil decisions down strictly into the dollars in the sense, they may include sales tax, they may not when we move forward. I would recommend that we absolutely do. But they're taking you to a bottom line, really a return on investment calculation is really where they're driving you, and certain things are known in that world. Density will always be easier to serve and will always carry a higher return on investment. Generally, it'll actually be positive, whereas others are working their way towards a break-even. Vertical development, same thing. It's easier to serve, there's typically less cost, more value stacked on a smaller piece, again, parcel or acre, it'll work out the same. And thus, its ROI will show up to be higher. You are beginning to see these make their way throughout Texas. A few of them that we've looked at recently, College Station, Georgetown, Fort Worth, probably where it really originated. I know the first class I went to on it was about Fort Worth's efforts. Fayette, Texas. So you're seeing a wide array of cities, still not extremely prevalent, but I do think it's coming and it's moving forward. The cities that have had these the longest were using them as an analysis tool specifically for annexation. And again, because of the change in annexation policy, that's probably no longer the driver, but the mathematics of the situation will be relatively the same. So the thought that I would leave the council with today, remember we do have the Implementation Matrix. It does list and identify certain priorities. The Fiscal Impact Analysis is not tagged as a priority, but I think the reason why isn't that it's not important, it's because of sequencing. So one of the most driving, recommended priorities out of your Comprehensive Plan is the Unified Development Code. It's that complete rewrite of what today are your development rules, which does include subdivision, subdivision of land. If we were to do a Fiscal Impact Analysis before the UDC has been negotiated, presented, and ultimately accepted, I think you really run the risk that it's incorrect. I can't tell you for a fact it will be, but I can tell you that the UDC is going to be substantively different than your existing zoning codes. We've seen enough of it through this point in the process that we know that. So the Fiscal Impact Analysis before that is likely to be superseded, or it's telling you the story of the past. It's not really telling you the story of where you are and where you're going to start. Counsel, we do expect that UDC likely in April of 2021, possibly in May. We've lost a bit of time because travel was stopped as we went through the COVID, but there are some events scheduled between... there are some events scheduled between now and the end of the year to really get that going again. So with that, I think, again, my recommendation would be, not that this is not a valuable tool, it can be, but that doing such pre-UDC and ideally leaving enough time for that UDC to settle and see how development adjusts to it is going to cause you to end up doing it twice potentially. So Mayor, with that, I'll stop on the fiscal impact analysis and take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Council, Mr. Atkinson's given a high-level overview of the fiscal impact analysis. This does not mean that we will not talk about it in our planning meeting later this fall, but any questions for Mr. Atkinson or comments on this? Ms. Joy.
Mr. Atkinson, since you visited with at least two firms who do this type of work, did you ask them about proceeding with this impact study prior to the adoption of the UDC?
I'm going to ask Ms. McAcorin to speak to that. She made those calls for me last week.
No, ma'am, we did, sorry. No, ma'am, we did not ask them that specific question. We asked the firms what they're familiar with, the different types of fiscal impact analysis that they have done for other cities and for some examples, and then the estimated cost.
But that is a question we could ask of those firms that at least are familiar with the process.
Correct. The other cities, I will say, in Texas that have done it, that we've looked at, they all did it after their comprehensive plan, and I do not believe any of them had a rewrite of their UDCs, but we can look further into that as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from Ms. McAcorin or Mr. Atkinson? Mr. Chodas?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chodas, then we'll go to Mr. Christian after Mr. Chodas.
Okay. The UDC conversation to start April of '21? Did I understand that correct?
That is the target date for it to be complete and back in front of the council. Yes, sir.
Upon completion, then we can begin conversation on the impact analysis? Did I understand that correct?
I think that would be the appropriate time. Certainly, we can address it in your planning sessions.
If and when this does happen, the impact analysis discussion, anticipation, another three months, two months, any idea?
You'll be in the midst of preparing the following year's budget at that time, and would suggest that pending the council's guidance, that would be the time to include that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chodas. Mr. Christian.
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff for going and doing this homework. I think there was a lot of confusion about exactly what this impact analysis is and how it can serve us. But I would ask a question is that, once this analysis is done, is it a tool that will benefit all of the city, or do we need to have more, look at it more parcels, like you said, individual areas of the city to get a really better idea of how we move forward with development in all areas of the city? Because you said parcels and acres, and it sounds like you do this, it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all report whenever you do one of these analyses. Would that be a fair assessment?
That, it's a great question, it's a good example. Done correctly upfront, when you're looking at your various cost of service, these types of deals, remember that this is targeted at new development. So it's not what is, it's not what's here today, it's, there's nothing in this particular place, and now we're looking forward to what might be. So it is unique to the particular development proposed, and they will all be different. You may have a development that is interior to your city, that's currently on vacant land, but it likely has utilities that are already there, or at least very close to it. That's going to give you a different number, a different output than the brand-new development that might be recently annexed or located right inside the city limits, and maybe there's not such infrastructure there at this point. So each time you run that model, you're running it on a different set of projects, and they'll all going to come up with a slightly different answer.
Any other comments? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
I'm used to green being gold. I would ask that, once we get to that point, for me, I'm not sure how the other council members feel, that we have a work session to ensure that we, for me, thoroughly understand the direction that we're going in with something of this nature. Because it is something that takes a lot of delving into for us to really understand and really understand how we'll use it, if we use it, or whatever. So on my behalf, I would ask that we plan for some deep diving regarding the matter so that we all are clear.
Duly noted, thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. McAcorin, thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Atkinson, we shift now and just run through high level of the budget. We've seen these slides before, I want to make sure we get to a point where we can have some discussion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So very quickly, the highlights of the budget, I'm just going to hit the bold underlying pieces, balanced, maintain services. Your general fund has a three-tenths of 1% increase, or a net $606,000 from the prior year. The ad valorem tax rate is reduced by 1.64 pennies, and the proposed rate, though, is 1.06% above no new revenue. You are reducing the overall debt load of the city by nearly $108 million. There are no general impact fee increases, very minimal staffing changes across the entirety of your budget. Street maintenance will remain funded at $10 million. The dirt road residential program funding was doubled to $800,000. $54.4 million for your capital improvements, vehicles, and equipment. We continue to focus on the priority elements identified in the comprehensive plan, specifically, that's your dedicated neighborhood planning position, and the associated capital funds. We're using the CARES Act dollars where it's appropriate to do so. There are no employee compensation increases across the board in the proposed budget, but there also are no increases to the health plan cost. We maintain our reserves. Looking at the general fund on the bottom line, you see that the budget is $230, $230 million, $842,000, and thus you see the $606,000 or the three-tenths of 1% change. General fund expense matches balanced budget. Here's the summary of your total. The two items to point out on the revenue, total funding sources, $877.2 million, total expense, $867.5 million. The difference between those two are capital dollars going to reserve primarily in your enterprise funds. Remember, the general fund was balanced exactly. Debt service fund goes way down, special revenue funds are down, enterprise funds are up, 9% or $42 million, that is not rate changes, that is system growth, and that's recognition of prior revenue. Internal services went up, and that's largely insurance and some part of the fleet. Again, we've talked about the general fund. Second bullet is a highlight, your debt service fund's down 34%. So we took off nearly $108 million worth of debt, we took off $22 million in debt service. All in across the entirety of the city, so all your enterprise funds, your special revenue, your general fund, it's a 1.6% increase. And again, $600,000 of that was the general fund. Tax rate, talked about that, the numbers at the top represent the required postings. We will raise more total property tax than last year's budget by $1.5 million, 1.61%. Of that, 2.395 is actually from the new property coming forward. Stop on this one for just a moment. The structure of the proposed tax rate is such that the home that was last year $152,000 went up this year to $157,000. Again, those are calculations performed by the Lubbock Central Appraisal District, a 3.04% average increase. If your home went up by that average number, your tax bill will remain the same. If your home went up by that average amount, your tax bill will stay the same, it will not go up. If the value of that home went up by less than the average, it'll be a very slight decrease. And if it went up greater than the average, it'll be a very slight increase. But I'll remind the council, there's 77,000 residential parcels, so trying to get, you can't make one that's different for all, you work towards that average, and if that's where you are, you'll stay the same. See the note at the bottom of the page, if the no new revenue rate had been proposed and adopted, that's equivalent of 75 cents per month, but again, only on that exact average home. There will be some greater sum that actually costs. This is that same data, it just shows for the different values of the homes, how that value changed year over year, and that if it was the 3.04%, the tax bill, the amount paid, is not changing. Property tax rate comparison, you see Lubbock, we're a little closer over there to the left, you see the changes that we have. Same tax rate numbers, just showed a little different manner. So Mayor, I went through that extremely quickly. If there's any questions from you or the council, be glad to try to speak to those.
Okay, open the floor for questions, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a...
Or comments, excuse me.
Thank you. I don't have a comment, I just wanted to make sure that we pointed this out, because we had several individuals on last meeting that were concerned about the amount of taxes they would pay. All of this information, as it relates to taxes, is only related to city of Lubbock taxes. And I just wanted to make sure that we get that out there. There's some other folks out there that do their thing, but everything that relates to the amount, the tax rate, and the amount of taxes per home relates to the taxes for the city of Lubbock. Am I correct, Mr. City Manager?
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you. Ms. Patterson-Harris brought up a really good point that sometimes we forget about. That is, Mr. Atkinson, the percentage approximately of an overall Lubbock County Appraisal District bill that taxpayers in this county get, and especially the city, of course, but what percentage is that? I know it's different a little bit because of school districts, but approximately, how close are we on that? Mr. Kostalich?
Blue, use LISD and just pull the total tax rate, two-point something?
For LISD, a home inside the city of Lubbock in LISD is a little over $2, so you could say roughly about, a little less than a quarter of that.
It's about a quarter, right.
A little less than 25% total would be.
My recollection is that, last year, it was 22, 23, and 24 cents.
Yes, across the big three.
Depending on Lubbock Cooper, Lubbock ISD, or Friendship.
Yes.
Correct.
That's correct.
I just want, appreciate that, that information, because as Ms. Patterson-Harris, we tend to forget that not everybody understands our taxation and our responsibilities to this community. But I appreciate you coming forth on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Ms. Joy.
There was some conversation at the special meeting on September, I think it was the 2nd, about the dirt roads. And so I think it's important for us to talk about, how did we get here with the number of dirt roads that we have within the city of Lubbock? And let's exclude annexations, okay? Because annexations are a different animal. But I'm talking about the ones that are in the core of the city, where people have lived for a number of years. How did that happen?
That is a great question. So you also can extend this to sidewalks, although the time period is different. Where we have residential homes on dirt roads, those neighborhoods were platted, they were divided into lots and streets. Before, there was a requirement for the developer to actually pave the roads. And then at no point since then did either individual property owners or the city come forward and fund the pavement. There are other neighborhoods in town that are of similar age, that were built with homes on dirt residential roads, and in a few of those cases, neighbors got together, they assessed themselves a fee, the city paid upfront, that fee was collected to cover that paving. That's called participation paving. It still legally exists, in reality, it died out 20 years ago at least. So what we're doing today is a program that this city council created, I think we're in our fourth year, starting our fourth year of it. This city council recognized, there's roughly 50 miles of dirt residential streets, and we define that not just that it's dirt, but that there's a house on it. There's a little over 50 miles of that in this community, and the city has an obligation to try to do something. This program was created, we funded it at 400, 400, 400, and now we're bringing it forward to 800. We have also, in the past, accessed community development dollars to kind of multiply ours. We're going to do the same again in this new year coming forward. But that same description fits sidewalks. Sidewalks were not required until relatively recently, relative in the terms of development. So you have neighborhoods that have paved streets, they have homes, they have no sidewalks. They were not required, and thus they were not put in. You can't do that today, and you haven't been able to do that for some time, but that's how we got here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Further questions or comments? Okay, let's move on to item 24. Item 24 is the COVID-19 update. Council, you've become accustomed to seeing this. It's a brief update from Ms. McAcorin.
Perfect. Give me just one moment, please, and I will get this pulled up. Perfect. Okay, I was here before you, two weeks ago, with our update, and so this update is going to just build on top of that, and I'm going to cover everything that's occurred over the last few weeks. So you've heard this many times, our first declaration of disaster was on March 15th. We are still under that activation today with 36 departments participating. As of last Friday, we have been under this activation for 171 days, 1,387 hours. Our staff commitment through last Friday has included 375 members of staff, working 89,120 hours. The bulk of those hours are still from Public Health, Lubbock Fire Rescue, and Lubbock Police Department. In terms of logistics, this is run out of the Emergency Operations Center. To date, they have made a little over 6.7 million requests for PPE and equipment. We've received about 2.1 million items. We have canceled the requests for about 4.6 million items due to the supply chain normalizing, and we still have 62,658 items on outstanding requests that are pending. In anticipation of any future surge response, the Texas Department of Emergency Management is providing additional PPE stock, and they are providing that directly to UMC, to Covenant, and to the City of Lubbock Emergency Operations Center. Our testing sites have not changed, but I want to remind you and the public of where they are. Rogers Park Gymnasium is at 3300 Auburn. That testing site is available from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. I will note, because this was a question last time, LCU is utilizing this testing site. Also, this testing site can be available at other times as needed. The Larry Combest Community Health and Wellness Center, located at 301 40th Street, is operating Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM and 12:30 PM to 4:00 PM. Texas Tech University and the Texas Department of Emergency Management are operating a testing site at the Texas Tech Museum at 3301 4th Street. That testing site is Monday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and it is currently slated to run through September 23rd.
And I believe it restarts tomorrow, does that sound right?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yes, sir. And then lastly, LISD and the Texas Department of Emergency Management will operate four testing sites one day a month through December. Those dates are always to be determined, and they are going to be at all four high school campuses. Our libraries are continuing to operate at 50% capacity. One thing that we talked about at the last council meeting was that... One thing that we talked about at the last council meeting was that we were working on getting all of the computer labs reopened. That has been completed, so all computer labs are open to the public now. And as we noted, we have safety precautions in place, including sanitization after each user on a computer. The Buddy Holly Birthday Bash was held successfully yesterday from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. We had, I'm sorry, it was held yesterday on September 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We had 178 visitors, but at no time did they have more than 35 people in the building. So it was very successful and very safe. The Garden and Arts Center will hold their fall festival this weekend on September 12th. The Buddy and Maria Elena Holly Plaza will hold a community dance day on September 12th. And I understand this will be our second one, and Councilwoman Patterson-Harris participated in the one during August, and it was very good, I hear.
And I was very sore the other night. But it was, it was an awesome day, just the number of people-
You gonna be there this, we want to know if you're gonna be, you didn't give us any notice, we want to know if you're gonna be there this time.
Well, I, I, I made a promise to be there, and I had to keep my word. And I did, but it was an awesome time. I think, we often talk about quality of life and activities that really draw people in and allow them to enjoy life, but not only that, to begin to engage with people from all areas of the city. And this did exactly that. And I did some tachy that Saturday morning, I tell you what. But not, not to interrupt you, but I just wanted to say that it was really an awesome event.
Good. I saw a little video, and we were tempted to put it in here, but for time, we didn't.
Next time you come back, we need some video of that.
We'll do some videos. There we go. The Civic Center is scheduled to hold the Park Ridge Pregnancy Center 27th Annual Event on September 17th. I believe this is a private event, but it's just worth noting again that we're seeing events starting to take place again and at our facilities. Our Building Safety Department, I want to point this out, we come every month and we update you on how many single-family permits we've issued. Once again, you see for August, we issued 139 single-family permits this year compared to 120 last year. You'll see to date that despite this pandemic, we are not slowing down. In fact, we are swamped. We are extremely busy with a 30% increase over this time last year for single-family permits. So they're, they're holding strong.
Exactly.
Parks and Recreation, our meal programs are continuing to serve many senior citizens. In the last 24 weeks, we've now served 11,280 meals. Our city recreational leagues are rocking right along. I mentioned these last time, they're still ongoing. So our Adult Sand Volleyball League is running through September 24th, and the Adult Softball League is running through October 16th. Additionally, these two parks, events, or events approved at parks were mentioned last time. This first one was held very successfully this past weekend, and it was the Lubbock Sports Cup Soccer Tournament at the Burl Huffman Athletic Championship Fields. So those are the synthetic turf fields. And then the Lubbock Soccer Association is slated to begin their fall season this weekend as well. Now, we all know, you've seen the numbers here lately of the increase in COVID-19 positive cases. In response to that surge in cases, our Public Health Department has ramped up their employees for their contact tracing, so they've hired temporary workers. We've also reassigned some City of Lubbock employees over to the Public Health Department as needed. They are currently operating daytime and evening shifts for contact tracing. In addition, we have our South Plains Incident Management Team that comes in every Tuesday to assist with data entry and contact tracing, but they're also called in more frequently as needed, especially in times like this when we're responding to an increase in cases. The Coronavirus Relief Fund, I talked to you last week about the allocation, the initial dispersment that we've already received, as well as the reimbursement that we've requested. I will note that there was new guidance issued by the U.S. Department of Treasury last week, and so we're currently ensuring that our reimbursement requests are in accordance with that new guidance. Yesterday, Governor Abbott extended his disaster declaration that was originally issued on March 13th of 2020. And so just to note, you all know this, and for our public, the executive orders remain in place, including the statewide mandatory mask order, which is very important. Okay? With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Ms. McCacken, go back two slides, please. I think you double-clicked over one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. You're right, I did. Okay. This is something that's very noteworthy, I think is getting a lot of attention, and there may be questions. As of September 4th, the Department of Health and Human Services, as well as the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, issued an order under Section 361 of the Public Health Service Act to temporarily halt residential evictions to prevent the further spread of COVID-19. That order is in effect through December 31st of 2020. The link that's on the bottom of the slide for anybody that's interested will take you to the full order so they can read it and see any, any details that are in there. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Questions for, on the COVID-19 update? Questions or comments for Ms. McCacken? Ms. Joy?
You told us that we have additional guidelines from the Treasury Department. However, our funds have gone through the state for the city of Lubbock. Which ones are we going to follow?
So I'll, I'll speak to that. Just real quick reminder, councilmember, as you note, Lubbock's CRF Coronavirus Relief Fund, our CRF dollars came to us through the Texas Division of Emergency Management. Larger cities and counties took their dollars direct from the Treasury. So there is a filter between Lubbock and Treasury, and it's the Texas Division of Emergency Management. TDM is obligated to follow that Treasury guidance, so we're moving to try to be ahead of that curve, and we're ticking our boxes to say, here's the updated guidance, and where it matches, where it matches, where it matches. So our first checkpoint is TDM, our guiding principles, our rules that we're following our Treasuries.
But in the, in the past, TDM had its, some of its own rules, so that's why I'm asking. I mean, we could, we could be tied up with this for months.
We could. And of course, the largest of those additional TDM rules, they do reference Treasury in several places in the contract. But the biggest rule that TDM applied to us that did not go to the larger cities is that 75-25 rule. So 25% of Lubbock's allocation was available for what you could generally call direct assistance dollars. That's roughly $3.5 million to the city. City Council put $3 million of those dollars in the hands of people who needed them under several different categories, and you did that in about 13 days.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I have a question with regard to the testing sites. I know prior to, to this group being utilized, one of the sites was at Patterson, and there was no cost to the citizens. Where are we with regard to any cost for the, these testing sites that we have in place right now?
My understanding is that these testing sites are all at no charge to the citizens.
The TDM testing sites are at no charge. The other testing available throughout the community, you have some at Walgreens, certainly our clinics, our hospitals, they're, they're on their own rules. Those are private providers, providing a service. The TDM sites are at no cost.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the citizens knew, knew that what was actually available.
Good point.
That's all that's under them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. Chides.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. McCracken, these no-cost sites that are open to the public, how are we disseminating this information to the public? Letting them know that if they, if they suspect or they expect it may be a problem, go get tested, it's free? How, how do we do that? Or how's it being done, handled, managed?
So I know we talk about it a lot in our press conferences, and I believe we have some flyers that are out as well. I don't know if we have anything beyond that. We do, we have it on our website as well. We have a resources page that includes that information. Mr. Atkinson, is there anything that I'm missing?
Yes, we continue to use our social media, our press releases. If you go to mylubbock.us and click on the COVID-19 page, there's actually an interactive map, and it will identify these TDM sites and the other locations, the private locations that we're aware of are all on there as well, and you can click on them and pull up additional information.
And the reason I bring it up, because there's quite a few citizens out there that are not computer literate. There's a lot of citizens out there, as we know, that are multi-generational, living in a household. And that really creates that snowball effect. And that's, that's a, that's a concern nationwide, not just here in Lubbock, but the multi-generational households, just by definition. You know, one person gets COVID, now you've got three, four, five, or six, possibly more people that are maybe exposed to it. Maybe we need to sit down and figure out how we can-
There's always more we can do, and one on the-
Yeah, how we can find these people that, that are falling through the cracks.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Further comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. McCacken.
Thank you.
Counsel, I believe that takes care of our executive session. We have, excuse me, work session. We're going to go to executive session in a moment, but before we do that, I've got one poll on my list, that's item 727. Any other polls, counsel? Mr. Christian, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, any questions for staff about items on the regular agenda tonight? Okay, we do have reason for executive session. City Council will hold executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreements, and to hold consultation with attorneys under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, and to discuss personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. It is 2:57. Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session. Good afternoon. It's 4:56. Lubbock City Council has returned from executive session. We have, next on our agenda tonight are our ceremonial items. We'll open with our invocation, followed by the pledges to the United States and to the Texas flag. Leading our invocation tonight is Jerry Ramirez. Jerry is the missions pastor at First Baptist Church. He also serves as one of the, serves, he aids our police department, serves as, I just went blank, we just talked about it.
Chaplain.
One of the chaplains. I just lost the word. Thanks, Jerry. And has done that for, for a number of years. So Jerry's gonna, after Jerry's prayer, the mayor pro tem will lead us in the pledges. Everyone, please rise.
Would you pray with me? Father, we're grateful today for the many blessings, God, that are ours. Father, we're grateful for our community, the place where we get to live. Father, I thank you for these that are before us, God, that are making decisions pertaining to our community. Father, I would pray today that you would give them wisdom. God, we recognize that the assignment that they have is not easy. And so, Father, I pray today that you would bless them, that you'd protect them, that you'd watch over them. And, God, that each and every decision that they make, Father, we recognize, Lord, that they don't take it lightly. And so, Father, I pray your protection and your guidance in everything that they do. Father, in the midst of God-upendemic, Father, we recognize that you are our hope. Lord, there are people today in our community who are looking for that hope. Father, we're grateful that we can call on you and that you offer that hope. Father, there are those that are, they're at the end of their, their rope, Father, they don't know what to do. And so, Father, I pray, God, that they would reach out to someone, that you would take care of them, and that you would put someone in their pathway. Father, for those that are hurting financially, God, I pray that you would place someone in their midst that would show them, God, who you are. Father, I pray that through all of this, Father, that we would recognize you as our provider. And, Father, we thank you. Father, I pray for a mighty movement of your Holy Spirit, God, that we would see a revival, Father, today and in the days to come. Father, that we would see you move in a way, God, that we've never seen you move before. Father, thank you because you love us. Thank you for Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jerry. Will you please join us in the pledges of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Pastor, thank you for opening us up today with prayer. Thanks for all you do for our community. We had breakfast at the same greasy spoon this morning, so we both got off to a great start to our week. Okay. It is 5 o'clock, and I will call the Lubbock City Council to order. It is, today is the 8th of September in 2020. We are in our regularly scheduled first meeting of September, and we are in our regular agenda. Counsel, we'll, I've not gotten the list of citizen comments yet, so we'll go down and catch the minutes and come back to citizen comments if that's, if that's okay with you guys. The minutes are number six on our agenda. They begin on page 85. The minutes for the July 21, 2020 called special city council meeting at the Electric Utility Board, the August 11, 2020 regular city council meeting, and the August 19, 2020 called special city council meeting, coffee with the mayor, are all included with our agenda book. In order to begin discussion, is there a motion?
Move the broom. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chides, for that motion, and Mr. Griffith for that second. Before we vote, it's important for me to remind you, as I did earlier, that Mr. Christian is joining us virtually today. Randy, are you with us?
Yes, sir. I am, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that everyone here knew you were there. We have, we have a full house, it's just that Mr. Christian is joining us virtually. Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes that were presented in our agenda book? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed by the very same side? Okay. The motion carries seven to zero. We will now hold for a moment for our citizen comments. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, sir. They're having a little difficulty with the copiers running that, so if you wanted to, maybe can hold just about two minutes, they should have them in here.
Counsel, I don't think there's really anything else we can take care of without, I guess we could go all the way down to the very end of the agenda if you want to go to item, if you want to go to item 816, y'all want to do that? You want to catch that one? Counsel, it's okay with you, we'll go to, Mr. Christian, we're gonna, we're gonna skip to 816. We're having a little technology problem at the moment, and so we won't have our citizen comments packaged for just a moment, but we'll skip to page, it's on 868. This is brought to us by the city secretary, it's to consider a resolution nominating a candidate for a position on the Board of Directors of the Lubbock Central Appraisal District. The Lubbock Central Appraisal District is run by five directors. Those directors are elected by the, the different political subdivisions that they collect taxes for. They've had a member of that board who served for 28 years, has recently resigned. It is, it's in, it's, so it's in the middle of a term, and their bylaws state that they ask for nominations from those political subdivisions that they represent, people like the city, the county, LSD, et cetera. And then they will, they will have, they will appoint someone to fulfill that uncompleted term. I would open the floor for a- I would open the floor for a, a motion for someone that we might nominate as a Lubbock City Council to the Lubbock Central Appraisal District Board. Mr. Chides?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to nominate Sunny Garza to the Board of Directors of the Lubbock Central Appraisal District.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Mr. Chides to nominate Sunny Garza, and seconded by Ms. Joy. Okay, is there discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to nominate Sunny Garza to the Lubbock Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same side? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. Okay, counsel, we'll now move back to citizen comments. Citizen comment are number five on our, on our agenda tonight. So let me make sure that, that I, there we get this, we go through the, sort of the guidelines here. First of all, citizens, to comment, you've got to be commenting on something that's on tonight's agenda. So if you came here to, to comment on something that's not on tonight's agenda, you'll have to come back at whatever, at the point that it's on the agenda. Second, the comments are limited to three minutes. We asked that when you come in that you read your name and address. Give us that first, so we can get that in the record. We'll give you a warning when you've got about 30 seconds left to make, with your comments. Okay? So I'm going to sort these and sort of keep them maybe in. Okay, let's start tonight with Grace Reed. She's here to speak on item 7 dot 27. Please come forward.
My name is Grace Reed. I'm at 4910 116th Street in Lubbock, Texas.
Ms. Reed, would you pull that microphone closer to you? Either that or pull your mask down, one of the two, so we can, maybe that would be best. There you go. That'd be great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Grace Reed, and I'm a leader with St. John's United Methodist Church and a member of West Texas Organizing Strategy. For those of you with whom we have not had the opportunity to meet, W T O S is a broad-based organization made of churches, nonprofits, and professional organizations from across our community. Our diverse, our diverse members and institutions come together around a common agenda of issues that face our families. Tonight, we have three leaders who will be talking with you about item 7 point 2 point 7 on the council agenda, the use of the coronavirus relief funds for the mental health voucher program. While we are a small group in the council chambers, there are dozens of leaders watching and supporting this vote from the safety of their homes. Tonight, I am here to express my support for and to give a quick rundown of the mental health voucher program's relevant origins. In our organizing tradition, house meetings or small group conversations are the building block for identifying leaders and understanding what pressures are facing our families. Every two weeks since the beginning of the pandemic, W T O S has been holding meetings on Zoom of 30 to 50 people and asking the question, how has COVID-19 impacted your family? Time and time again, we found our neighbors sharing with us in fear, anxiety, loneliness, and depression. Our country's sudden economic downturn, paired with the concern around COVID-19 and the forced separation of family and friends, has compounded the already prevalent economic and mental health concerns in our community. The number one theme that kept reappearing each and every time that we met was concerns around mental health. We then reached out to the mental health community to work together to create a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Thank you for being here this evening. Okay, next is Cheryl Hall.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Cheryl Hall, and I'm a licensed psychologist representing the South Plains Association of Psychologists. Along with leaders of W T O S, the mental health providers in Lubbock have joined together to create the Mental Health Voucher Program. It's an answer to the call for mental health services related to COVID-19. Through W T O S, we have organized psychologists, licensed clinical social workers, licensed professional counselors, and licensed marriage and family therapists, who are poised to provide treatment for these families that need help. My patients have reported increasing levels of anxiety and depression during this time. I've had a high volume of requests to see new patients, more than I can accept. Patients have been negatively affected by the uncertainty of the future, fear of contracting COVID-19, economic and health insurance losses, and deaths of family and friends. Isolation is particularly acute for those that live alone. Parents are juggling multiple roles from home, and that is very stressful. Primary care providers that I work with report a much higher need for anti-anxiety medications as well. Often, there are confusing messages, even from authorities like the CDC and the World Health Organization. It's a pandemic that is ambiguous by nature. The science is always evolving, and it has no clear end. The uninsured and the underinsured individuals of Lubbock need resources now. Thank you for your support in voting yes for the Mental Health Voucher Program.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Thanks for being here. Thanks for what you do for our community. And then next is Cynthia Quintanilla.
Cynthia Quintanilla, 102 Avenue J here in Lubbock, Texas. I am the Executive Director for Catholic Charities and a leader with W T O S. As you heard from Grace Reed and Dr. Cheryl Hall, we created the Mental Health Voucher Program as a response to the need that we were seeing among our families here in the community. As you know, Catholic Charities has been on the front lines of COVID-19 response, and we are ready and willing to do the same with this Mental Health Voucher Program. The Mental Health Voucher Program will require a short phone intake by one of our qualified staff members at Catholic Charities, a brief screening to assess requirements and need for the program, and then provision of a voucher that can be used for up to six sessions per individual. The participant will then be given the list of names of three providers that meet their needs, and the individual will contact the providers directly to set up appointments for each one of their sessions. It will also be the requirement of the mental health providers that in order to be reimbursed for the program, that they submit an invoice for the services that they have provided, based on their standard fee schedule. The Mental Health Voucher Program is a pilot program and is just the beginning of our work around mental health as a community collaboration. The relationships that we are building between institutions and professions will allow us to continue to find innovative solutions to the pressures that families are facing today. We are actively working with a program evaluation team at Texas Tech, and we'll look forward to sharing what we learned from the program with each one of you council members. We have heard so many of the stories that people have shared with us through our Zoom hall conversations around the need to access mental health services. According to pre-COVID-19 statistics, one in four adults and one in 10 children will have mental issues. So today, I ask each of you to vote yes for the Mental Health Voucher Program as a step in the right direction around mental health services in our community and around COVID-19 relief. Thank you.
Cynthia, thank you, and thanks for the work you do every day. We appreciate it very much. I think that that's the last speaker from the West Texas Organizing Strategy. Are there, there are other people here that are supporting those, those thoughts tonight. If you'd like to raise your hand, so we know the other part of your groups that are here, thank you for being here. Your message, your words been heard, certainly. Thank you for your efforts during the pandemic. Okay, next to speak is Michael Ward. Ms. Ward's here to speak on items 82 and 84. Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Ward, 5417 8th Street. I'll try not to duplicate all of my comments from last week at the hearings. I don't have the time for sure. But I did write you all a letter, kind of explaining my thought patterns on all of this. After the hearing last week, you all were discussing some way to find a million dollars to cut from the budget so that the tax rate could go down to the amount that would generate the same amount of revenue as the year we're in now. And I appreciate that effort. I also talked to a few of you after the meeting to tell you that the place to find the million dollars is to take a little bit out of that market Lubbock fund that, of course, has enough said over and over, so we'll burden you with that one more time. But it really has no authorization. In fact, we repealed it by 84% 28 years ago. But the market Lubbock money is just one part of the economic development. It gets about $4 million this year. LITA, that's funded with a different source of revenue completely than the property tax, is 1/8 cent. It's generating about $7 million. So together, there's a total of $11 million being allocated for economic development. The same time that we're, I guess incentivizing people to come here, we also, because of our rapid growth, we need more city revenue devoted to infrastructure and services and so forth. And that money, with the property tax part of that, it should be discussed every year as being part of the, the overall general fund budget. And it seems to be sort of a set aside, like it's carved in stone, which it is not. But the, the other part of this, of course, is that we traded 3/8 cents of the half cent available in Title 83, Article 51, 906, to lower property taxes, and that was included in that statute because the law obviously thought that this would be a way to strongly attract and encourage new economic activity and growth. There was some discussion last week on the, or a lot of the discussion after the hearing was on the sirens, the outdoor warning system. And one of you made a comment that it would be worth it just to save one life. And it's not going to take a million dollars to save lives if you adopt a, a system for Lubbock to be pro-life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Next to speak is Jim Beck. Mr. Beck's here to speak on item 82.
Mayor and counsel, in 1923, near the inception of our city, winners and losers were chosen and embedded in our city DNA with the ordinance penciled 223 establishing separation of race by whites of blacks who were considered, as the ordinance states, dangerous to the health and pollutants to the earth and atmosphere. That 1923 invisible red line became visible then and is even today visible in the disparity that we can see in our city. I have heard the sentiment made that we need to forget the past and move on into the future by many whom the past has been kind to and the future looks hopeful for. And that might be true were the past equally kind and presently hopeful for all. But we know that's not the case, as is evident by the remaining disparity in East and North Lubbock. Every city council has had the opportunity to address the disparity by budgets, and I'm sure some did honestly and with charity. But in a divided city, charity only in the long run soothes the soul of the giver, leaving the receiver in temporary care and oftentimes long-term despair. Our city needs solidarity with all of Lubbock, not growth for some and charity for others. You could be the council who, after 100 years, decides the erasing of the dark line in our history is necessary to bring hope to all of Lubbock. You should know that presently, in our city, there is a large and growing number of senior ministers and ministry staffs from some of the largest churches in Lubbock who are seeking to listen, hear, and understand the historical and present impact of the old red line in Lubbock. They're listening to voices of black and brown Lubbock, old and new. They are hearing stories of pain and depression, past and present. And they are looking with open eyes and open hearts at the structural and systemic racism evident in our city even to this day. And they are looking at 2023, the 100-year anniversary of that ordinance, to seek substantive change in Lubbock. So you have a choice. How will history remember you? Will history remember you? And if yes, what will history remember you for? It is my prayer and our prayer of pastoral influencers, which will not go away, that you will be the city council that decides to heal the wounds of our brothers and sisters who we have injured. This could be your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Next to speak is Adam Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez?
Good evening. Adam Hernandez currently living in the 7400 Block of Avenue X in District 2. I was in the meeting earlier today. Thank you all, by the way, for actually discussing that. I wanted to also appreciate City Manager Atkinson for actually doing the work to get some of those numbers and figures. It gives me hope that maybe we could have a rational discussion and move forward with some reason and intelligence. So thank you all for that. So I want to be more specific on what type of analysis that we are asking for, calling for. So one that looks at property tax data, of course, which is what most of those consultants do. But we would also like added revenue per acre, which fewer consultancies, from what I understand, do. And then even fewer do one that takes that data and then factors in cost. And so I had a question, Mr. Atkinson. You said that you were kind of concerned because of the UDC not being formalized. And so we actually had a counter to that, and so I had a question earlier but couldn't ask it. So that will come up here in a second. Also, you said that the analysis looks at only new developments and not what's already there. But actually, our sources say that it actually looks at every parcel and every building in the city. So there's some discrepancy there. I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that. So anyway, so what can cities use this information for? This is coming from our sources once again. Cities can use it as a budgeting tool. Cities can use it to quantify what their resource gap is. Cities can use it to prioritize economic incentive efforts. Cities can use it to inform their codes and ordinances. So again, it can inform that UDC. Cities can use it to explain the fiscal value of diversifying housing types and sizes and, and commercial development patterns. Cities could use it to inform future land use and growth management plans. Cities can use it to evaluate the fiscal impact of proposed developments prior to approval. And so it, with all that said, it seems to me that it makes a whole lot of sense to include it now. And even if it was a situation to where you didn't want to use it to inform the UDC, at least you would have the funds there set aside for when that is done in April or May. at least you would have the funds there set aside for when that is done in April or May, according to you, Mr. Atkinson, to where that could be started immediately. Because it seems to me that that's a pretty pressing issue, that anybody that has a household would not, they would all want to understand better where their money is coming from and where it's going. And this lets us know what's producing what, and it levels the playing field so that benefits don't automatically go to large buildings. And you can actually see what's producing what, which is not often what you would think. And so I present that to you all for your consideration, and thank you, Councilman Joy, for always asking those right questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Okay, I've got a handful of others. I don't believe, I'll call through these. I don't believe that, I'm sorry, no. I don't believe any of these are signed up to speak to anything that's on the agenda tonight. I'll run through these real quick and make sure I've not made a mistake. Mitchell Cochran.
Yes, sir.
Are you here to speak on something on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
What would that be?
Eight-point-one.
What specifically is eight-point, on eight-point-one?
Resolution for the disaster, for COVID. Resolution to renew the disaster declaration for COVID.
Okay.
All right, howdy. I'm Mitchell Cochran, nine oh six Milwaukee. Sorry, I'm pulling up my notes.
Take your time.
Yes, sir. So thank you, councilmen, councilwomen, and mayor and other city officials for allowing us to speak. As you all know, COVID's changed all of our lives, and I definitely do not envy what you all have to do. That's difficult, and I want to honor you all for trying you all's hardest. So some stats, as of four today, there are two thousand five hundred active cases in Lubbock and over thirteen thousand deaths in Texas. So obviously, we need to do something. Like I said, I don't know what it is, but I just want to honor you all for doing that. However, there is something we can do to help save lives in this town. There have been fifty-two thousand abortions in Lubbock, Texas in two thousand seventeen.
Mr. Cochran, that's not on our agenda tonight. I've already made that point.
Please put it on the agenda. Please put it on the agenda.
Johnny Perez. Mr. Perez. Joel Dakwar, maybe? Dakwar? Yes, sir. Looks like you're posted the same way as your peer there. As long as that's your topic, it's not on the agenda.
Sure.
No, no, sir. If it's not on the agenda, we can't speak to it.
I understand. Yeah, and I'm here to talk about COVID. The disaster.
If you keep your comments to COVID, that's germane. Otherwise, it's not.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I wanted to say that now that...
Name an address for the record, please, sir.
Excuse me, sorry. Yeah, it's Joel, Joel Dakwar, two-three-two-three Glenacode Acre Boulevard.
Thank you.
Lubbock. I wanted to say that now that school's back in session and students like myself are back on campus, we're seeing this corresponding rise in cases, a spike in cases. And this is affecting, not necessarily the students because they're not at risk, but it's being spread to professors, to teachers, to staff members of the school, to business owners in Lubbock and bar owners who, who students go to those places infrequent. And then as a consequence, I think the city is going to see, and we are seeing more cases and as a consequence, more deaths. And this is a concern because life is being endangered, and it's due to the irresponsible actions, A, of citizens and our own personal choices, but B, I think of the university and perhaps even the council of not perhaps having the right legislation to mitigate those irresponsibilities that are causing this rise of cases. So I think moving forward, it'd be good to recognize that COVID is, in fact, a disaster. It is a big problem, and it's being increased and augmented every day by our bad choices. And if we can establish that because it endangers life, it is in principle a problem, then I think that'll set an example moving forward for us for future pandemics, some of which are far more pernicious and far more deadly than perhaps a coronavirus.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Dakwar. Brooke Stryker. Having a hard time with this one. Somebody last name Patrick, maybe Rachel Patrick. And Catherine Cochran.
Howdy, City Council and Mayor and my representatives. Thank you. I'm Catherine, Catherine Cochran at nine oh six Milwaukee. I'm also a student at Texas Tech University. I wanted to thank you all for representing this great West Texas city and for allowing me to be here. I am speaking on the resolution to discussing protecting Lubbock citizens from the coronavirus and just declaring the state as where we at, where we're at, and as the health climate as a state of disaster. But I implore you, my representatives, just to recognize another potential disaster, and that's the disaster of Planned Parenthood potentially coming into the city limits. Please consider the sanctuary city ordinance.
You understand you're out of line. Thank you very much for coming.
Please put the ordinance on the agenda for next time.
You're out of line, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that concludes citizen comments. Council, we'll now move to item seven. It's a consent agenda. The consent agenda are items considered to be routine that are enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the city council desires to discuss an item, that item is removed from the consent agenda and is considered separately. Council, I believe that item seven-twenty-seven has been removed for separate discussion tonight. Is that correct? Anything else? Mr. Christian, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So let's, I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item twenty-seven. For approval. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you, Ms. Joy. We've got a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item seven-twenty-seven. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. That motion carries seven to zero. We'll now move to item seven-twenty-seven. It's on page five-sixty-nine. In order to begin discussion of this item, is there a motion? Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Thank you, Mr. Chides. Mr. Atkinson, do you have anything you want to go straight to Mr. Atkinson?
Go straight to Mr. Howerton, Mayor.
Mr. Howerton.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. What you have before you on seven-point-two-seven is a contract between the City of Lubbock and Catholic Charities in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. It is funded through the Coronavirus Relief Fund to fund the mental health voucher program. Ms. Quintanilla, who is our partner over at Catholic Charities, did a great job of kind of explaining to you guys what this program is going to do over the next few months. We're excited about offering it. As I said, it's seventy thousand dollars. The vouchers are up to a hundred and fifty dollars per visit, which should allow us to work with about sixty households. So you're looking at sixty, and we're eventually looking at nine hundred different visits with a healthcare professional.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Howerton on this one? Ms. Patterson Harris?
Not so much a question, but I appreciate the information. And Ms. Quintanilla, thank you for coming up before Mr. Howerton and providing that information. I pulled it because I wanted to make sure that we dove into that and actually put that information up front. So that's all that I needed. I appreciate the information.
Other comments? Mr. Chides?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Howerton, I'm not sure if you can answer this, or maybe Ms. Quintanilla can. We're talking sixty households.
Yes, sir.
Now, are these in addition to what's normally used or served? Or is this...
This is a separate program by Catholic charities.
Okay. It's above and beyond?
CD has never worked on a voucher program like this, and we're working with Catholic charities to offer that to the community. So it is above and beyond. Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Ms. Quintanilla, thank you for what you're doing for the City of Lubbock. Much appreciated. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Ms. Joy.
For those of you who know me very well, you know that when it comes to mental health, I like to try to catch our children when they're young. Ms. Hall and I've worked together on lots of different issues. And I do hope that when you work with these families, that you will identify those youngsters, some of whom have learning disabilities that cause some mental health issues, or they just at a very early age or beginning to develop. Prevention is still the best way to address this issue. So please keep that in mind as you work through with these families, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment if I might. I think this is money well spent. I wish we had twice as amount. None of us, or I know I can't even imagine the people that are suffering, that have mental health conditions that are suffering in ways that we don't even imagine during COVID. So I'm very supportive of this, and I would like to see the folks that are in charge of this maybe come back and give us a report of some success stories and just give us an update of the progress and the positive outcomes that, and I know they can't talk about people specifically by name, but I'd love to hear a report on how this is helping people throughout the community. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I bet Mr. Howerton can help us with that.
I bet we can. Yes, sir.
Other comments? I just, I want to thank the folks from West Texas Organizing Strategy for not only a good idea, but their persistence and sticking with it and encouraging, and frankly, your patience, too. We told you upfront that we, you know, these cares dollars are new to us like they are to everyone else, and our main, with this commitment to make sure we do it right and follow the guidelines. And so we appreciate you guys for your efforts on this, and certainly staff for listening and bringing it to us. Okay? Anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Howerton. There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve item seven-twenty-seven. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, council, we will now move to item eight-one. Item eight-one is on page five-seventy-one. There is no action needed on this. The governor has extended his emergency order for another month, and there's really no reason for us to update our local order. Is that correct, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Atkinson?
Yes.
Okay. Move to item eight-two. Item eight-two is on, it's on page five-seventy-two. It's the second reading of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget for the City of Lubbock. In order to begin discussion, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Mr. Chides. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Mr. Atkinson, are you going to do a quick overview on this one like you did earlier, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's get a quick overview. For those of you that have followed us closely, this will be something you recognize. But it's important, I believe, that we have a chance to see this again. Okay, Mr. Atkinson. Highlights of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget and capital program.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This will look familiar. This will be the third time you've seen the final portion of this presentation. We'll start with a few of the highlights of your proposed budget, the budget that is up for second and final read this evening. Of course, the budget maintains your city services, supports your council priorities, and it's a relatively flat year-over-year budget, most especially in the general fund, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. The budget is balanced. The budget maintains services. As it relates to the general fund, you have a net three-tenths of one percent increase. So in terms of dollars, your general fund budget year-over-year is proposed to increase by six-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars. Notably, one million dollars extra, additional is probably a better word, is going to public safety, with nearly six-hundred thousand of that going to LPD. The reason, then, it still is only a net change of a little over six-hundred thousand dollars is you have reductions in several of your other divisions. For your ad valorem tax rate, it is proposed to be reduced by one-point-six-four pennies. That yields a rate that is one-point-zero-six percent over the no-new revenue rate, and I have examples of that later in the presentation. Staff's very pleased this budget shows a reduction in the overall debt load of the city by one-hundred-and-seven-point-eight million dollars. There are no general impact fee increases and very minimal staffing changes for an organization of this size. In fact, you have six new FTEs, full-time equivalents, but due to reductions in other areas, that's a net change of three. Street maintenance, cash funding, again, maintained at ten million dollars. This will be the second year we've had that amount. The dirt road residential program, the funding from the city is doubled to eight-hundred thousand. Fifty-four-point-four million for capital improvements, vehicles, and equipment. Note that of sixty projects, ninety-five percent are cash-funded of sixty-one vehicles, and that's much fewer than we would typically purchase. We will have to catch up. But of those sixty-one vehicles, ninety-two percent are cash-funded. We are including an additional two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for substandard structure demolition. We continue the implementation of the comprehensive plan. The adds this year for that are the dedicated neighborhood planner position and associated capital funds for identified and approved needs. This budget does draw on the CARES Act dollars, and that's in the airport and in transit. There are no across-the-board employee compensation increases, but we are also not increasing the employee contributions for the health plan. We maintain reserves as required. Go specifically to the general fund. We'll look at the bottom line. Budget for FY twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, two-hundred-and-thirty-point-eight million. Look across to the right, you see the six-hundred-and-six-thousand-dollar year-over-year increase, or again, the three-tenths of one percent. Expenses for the general fund are the same amount. So you see a zeroed-out budget for the general fund. Looking in total, we'll come across the row that says total funding sources. The budget, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, all in is eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven-point-two million dollars. Coming down to the bottom for your total expenses, carry across that row for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, your expense budget is eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-five million. The difference are dollars that are being sent to reserve for capital. Okay? All in, total city budget has changed by thirteen-point-four million, or one-point-six percent. And again, six-hundred-and-six thousand of that's in the general fund. The remainder are in your enterprise or your special revenue funds. Looking at just a few highlights on the revenue side, again, the debt service fund, it's reduced thirty-four percent, twenty-two million dollars down. Special revenue, all in, reduced by ten percent, or five million dollars. Enterprise funds are increased by nine percent, or forty-two million. That is not through rate change. That's not through increasing rates. That is system growth and recognition of prior revenue. The internal service funds are up seven percent, just under five million dollars. Largest component of that are your insurance costs and some to fleet. General fund, we've talked about that. Again, your debt service, we reduce the revenue, but we reduce the expense by twenty-two million. That is strictly from pay down and not adding on top. Special revenue funds, you see that come down. Enterprise funds, eight percent increase, or thirty-six million dollars, and that's largely going to be your capital. Again, the citywide bottom line, one-point-six percent increase. That's... That's across every component of the city. On your tax rate, this is the statutorily required slide, so I'll do that real quickly, and then we'll jump into some real examples. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by 1.5 million or 1.61%. And of that amount, nearly 2.4% is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the roll this year. Under that, you see the three proposed, or the three tax rates that we published. The proposed rate is $54.1573. No-new revenue rate, $53.5885. And the voter approval rate, what used to be called the rollback rate, is $54.52. And again, the proposed rate exceeds no-new revenue by 1.06%. And I'll move into impact on single-family home. The rate structure is designed certainly to fund the appropriate piece of the budget, but it is designed such that a single-family residence, all across the city this year, according to the Lubbock Central Appraisal District, the average increase in value was 3.04%. So we keep that in mind. The house on the left, last year, that average taxable value was $152,782, and that house paid the city $852.55. The 3% increase makes the average home in Lubbock $157,422. Because of the proposed rate structure, they will be held basically harmless. They will pay the same city tax bill that they paid last year. If that home on the left had not gone up by 3.04, it had gone up by something less, they would pay less than they paid last year. If the home, the individual home, went up according to LCAD by more than the 3%, the tax bill will go up. But for all of those properties that fall into that average increase as determined by LCAD, the net effect is the tax paid last year to the city will be the tax paid next year to the city. This is that same information. It merely demonstrates a greater range of value. These all have the 3.04% in them. So again, if the property went up by 3.04, it's the same. If they went up less, they pay less. If they went up more, there will be a slight increase. Property tax rate comparison across the competitive set of cities, basically those with populations over 120,000. The brown bar represents current year. The blue bar represents proposed. So in the case of Lubbock, this year, we're at $55.8 pennies, and we're proposing to go to the $54.157 pennies. This is that same information then put into a different set of words. I'll focus on the impact. The structure is designed to account for growth in the average appraised value increase. Again, the 3.04%, average or less, average or more. Mayor, Council, I think it's appropriate to recognize that when you look at your general fund revenue, property tax represents 31% of the funding to provide your general fund services. Mayor, Council, with that, I'll pause and take any questions you may have.
Okay. Counsel, questions, comments for Mr. Atkinson? Ms. Joy.
Mr. Atkinson, is there a limit on the amount of tax that can be increased on a residential property in one year?
Since that's outside our control, I don't spend a lot of time. But I believe a residential property cannot change more than 10% year-over-year. Mr. Kostelich, is that correct?
That's correct.
That was my understanding, as I was sitting here playing with some numbers. Because what's presented is it either goes below 3% or it goes above 3%. But if you take the value of your home and multiply it by that 3%, that will tell you pretty much what that tax amount would be.
I'll tell you what that average was for the appraised value.
But on an individual basis, how is a homeowner to know for sure what their taxes will be?
So for the homeowners, each received a notice from the appraisal district that will have the proposed value. If those values were not ultimately contested or revised, that is the number right there. To calculate the taxes, all the taxes, property taxes, at least in Texas, are done per $100. So divide the new value that was in your appraisal notice by 100, and then multiply it by the $54.1573.
And I think it's been a question from citizens, how do I know exactly what my tax is going to be? Because if you don't deal with this all the time, it may not make a whole lot of sense to you. So what is the process? If you get your tax notice and you want to know if, obviously, they may know that it went up from the prior year, but they want to know how that was calculated. Is that a question for the city, or is that a question for the appraisal district?
We will be glad to help with that. I think it ultimately is an appraisal district question. That's also where the taxes are assessed. Would also remind people, you can look up your property on the Lubbock Central Appraisal District website. There is a tab to the right. When you pull it up, the first sheet that comes up generally is the value calculations and exemptions and so forth. There are tabs across the top of that page. You can select those tabs, and it will show you the prior tax bills and the current tax bills, not just to the city, but you'll also be able to see then your county, your independent school district, your hospital district, water district. I think that'll generally catch all of them that are in our city limits.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Atkinson, you brought up that property tax is 31% of the revenue of the general fund. How much is sales tax percentage-wise?
Substantially greater than that. Bluey, of the percentage?
Don't have the exact percentage, but it's around 33%, 34%.
33% or 34%?
Yes.
Takes both. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel, any other comments, questions for Mr. Atkinson, or general comments on the budget? Mr. Christian?
Yes, sir.
You got anything?
No, sir. I don't. Thank you.
All right, so make sure.
Yep.
Okay. You know, it's like, sort of like the last basketball game of the year, the last football game of the year. You know, you work hard on the budget for most of the year, and then you look up and you finished it. And you have to take a break before you get to do it again. That's sort of where we are. I think it's a responsible budget. I said it last week. It's a balanced budget. It pays down a bunch of debt. It continues our effort to pay cash and to, I think, fund needs and not wants. I, you know, I think at the top of the list of those that are sacrificing are our employees who are not going to get raises this year. I am pleased that we're able to take care of the increase in the, what would be their portion of healthcare in the budget. So it doesn't, and it would be a double whammy if you, if you got, had to pay that and didn't get an increase. But I feel good about the fact that we've strategically been able to fund some things that I think are important to us, the paving dirt streets. I think our street maintenance fits in that category. I think the ability to get this parks master plan does, done. We've got a huge investment in our park system, and I think getting a master plan done so we can start to move forward on that, working both with our budget as well as with grant dollars, and I think that's important. So I'm thankful for... Yeah, the neighborhood planning, thank you. I mean, that's a huge part of it. And, you know, not only the person is the liaison to the neighborhood, but funding to get the work going. So it's some of you in this, in the room are the ones that really, I think, spoke up, spoke up very effectively for that. So I'm pleased to be where we are. I'm thankful for the council and your work and the staff for all your work on this and getting us to this point right now. All right? There's no other comments? The motion on the floor is to approve item 8-2, the 2020, 2021 Operating Budget and Capital Program. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. We'll now move to item 8-3. Item 8-3 is on page 615. This is from Finance Also. It's to consider a resolution ratifying the adoption of the 2020, 2021 budget that raises more tax revenue than was generated in the previous year. In order to begin discussion, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Chides. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Atkinson.
Mayor, City Council, this is a required step as you adopt any budget that raises more property tax revenue than the prior year. You have taken one final vote that would adopt the budget. The item before you then is a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase that is reflected in the budget. It is part of what balances the budget. Consideration and approval of this resolution will satisfy the requirement then in Chapter 102 of the Texas Local Government Code.
Okay. Counsel, any further, any questions for? It looks like Ms. Joy's got a question or a comment.
Mr. Atkinson, this is a new provision that came out of the legislature in their last term. Is that correct?
It's, the language has been modified. This has been in prior budget adoption requirements.
And how was it modified?
I believe it's the language that we post when we talk about raising the more property taxes by the 1.5, and of that, the new, with the 2.395. I'm doing that off the top of my head.
Because as Mr. Massengill pointed out, I believe at the September 2nd meeting, our actual tax rate is less if we weren't doing it under the no-new revenue. Is that correct?
Say that again, please.
The tax rate last year, this year is less than that tax rate, but we have to take into consideration the new revenue.
That is, that is correct. This year's rate, the proposed rate, is less.
Yes.
We are taking into account the additional revenue, the largest majority of which is from new property, property that was not subject to taxation before.
And that was the change that the legislature made this past session? Is that correct?
The legislature did make substantive changes to how those calculations are done.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on item 8-3? Okay, we've got a motion and a second on this item. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by the same sign? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. We'll move now to item 8-4. 8-4 is on page 618. Mr. Griffith, do you have a motion on item 8-4?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point, or 0.541573, which is effectively a 1.06 increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Griffith.
This, not to belabor the point, Ms. Troy did an excellent job in discussion, in explanation along with Mr. Atkinson on why we have to read it this way by state law, but our tax rate is going down. Our revenue is going up, but our tax rate's going down. And as the mayor spoke, this is a very flat budget and a very good budget, and I think we're doing the right thing.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Other comments? Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor to approve item 8-4, which was Mr. Griffith's motion. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, we've got one final budget-related item tonight. It's item 8-5, and it has to do with allocation of the hotel occupancy tax revenues. So to begin discussion on this, is there, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Chides. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Ms. Brock.
Yes, sir. This is an item that we do every year when we do the budget. We're setting the actual percentages of the hotel occupancy tax and which entities that it go to. We have generally several of the same ones every year. Convention and Tourism Bureau is one. They basically, their rate did change just a little bit. Oh, sorry. Convention and Tourism did not change. It's flat, excuse me. Civic Center Operations and Marketing did go up just a little bit. Historically, what we've done with Civic Center is the hotel tax makes up the difference in their revenues in order to operate the Civic Center. And due to the decrease in the amount of hotel tax, their percentage went up just a little bit. Yes, sir. Buddy and Maria Helena Holly Plaza also went up because that's a fixed cost that we have to pay, so their rate also increased. The allocation to the Conference Center, which is in North Overton, also increased due to, the way that one is calculated is based on the prior year, whatever the hotel itself collected. It's 75% of that, and so that, this is somewhat of a fixed number based on their prior year collections. The total revenue projected for 2021 is roughly about $5.6 million. It's significantly different than the budget we project, we adopt, or the council adopted this year. This year, the budget was roughly, it'll be $2.2 million roughly lower than our adopted budget for 1920. It's also about the same amount lower than what we actually collected in the prior year in 1819. We did, we were very conservative on the projections because hotel occupancy is one of the things that have given us the most trouble trying to predict what's going to happen with them. So we opted on the side of being conservative with our numbers. The difference with hotel occupancy tax is what will happen because you are adopting a percentage. Whatever you, whatever we collect will be distributed based on that percentage. It's not really the number. It's the percentage itself. So, and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions. This one was tough for us this year, just based on the fact that we had such a smaller amount of money to distribute.
Okay, questions. Thank you, Ms. Brock. Questions for Ms. Brock? Okay, thank you very much, Cheryl. Counsel, any, any comments or questions on this before we have a vote? Mr. Griffith.
I would just like to say thank you, Ms. Brock, for your work you've done on this and explanation. I know it's not easy when you have to come give us this kind of data. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Other comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve item 8-5, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, let's now move to item 8-6. Item 8-6 is on page 625. Items 8, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11 are second reading of zone cases. Counsel, I thought we might get Mr. Ison to give us a very... we might get Mr. Ison to give us a very quick overview, and then we can decide how we want to handle these. I, I believe that one of the zone cases that we had two weeks ago went away for lack of a second, and another one was dropped. So I don't believe there was any, I think, I think there's generally was consensus on all six of these, but let's go through these. It looks like Mr. Mr. Chides wants to pull one off.
Just a question, Mayor.
Sure.
Are we considering it, well, also?
No, sir. No, sir. We'll do, no, we'll take that separate. This is eight, six through eight, eleven. And Mr., we'll get Mr. Ison to go through them all, then we'll get a, a side how we want to handle those. The chair will certainly be open to a motion to, to handle them collectively. Just over, just want to give you all, set that up. Okay, Mr. Ison, we'll start with case, zone case zero, four, five, eight, A. And once again, this is on page six twenty-five for those following along at home.
Sure. And before we get started on those zone cases, I did want to point out, hopefully you guys have noticed your staff reports look a little bit different.
They do.
Actually quite a bit different.
Yeah.
In the last eleven months that I've been here, we've really been focusing on the questions that you ask and trying to provide you that information beforehand, as well as trying to change the structure of the staff report to better tell the story of the development. We think we've been able to achieve those things, especially with the additional case information links to our code and the draft planning and zoning commission meeting agenda minutes. So if there's anything else you guys would like to see on those, please let me know. But we're still trying to tell better stories through what we present to you.
Yeah, that's a, it's very, very much improved. I particularly like the links. So if you have a question about something, you forget what C4 allows exactly, you know, so, well done. Thank you.
All right. So zone case four fifty-eight, A, is for Lubbock Aid Ambulance, represented by Chad Ailer. The request is to rezone property from local retail district C2 to commercial district C4 at 2747 34th Street. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located at the southeast corner of Canton Avenue and 34th. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and the city council also approved first reading by unanimous vote. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions on item eight, six? Okay, let's move to item eight, seven. That's 1598J. It's on page six thirty-nine.
Case 1598J is for Camelot Village, represented by TriStar Investments. The request is to rezone a portion of the property to general retail district C3 with a specific use for self-storage. Presentation disappeared.
There you go.
From general retail district C3 with specific use. Here we show the subject site that is requesting the rezoning, outlined in orange, generally located south of 34th and west of Loop 289. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and the city council also approved first reading by unanimous vote.
Counsel, any questions on eight, seven? Okay, let's move to eight, eight, page six fifty-five, zone case two, five, three, eight, K.
So case twenty-five, thirty-eight, K is a request from Beaton Bow Homes. The request is to rezone property from high-density apartment district A2 to two-family residential district R2 at 2602 Upland Avenue. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located at the southwest corner of 26th Street and Upland Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this item by unanimous vote, and the city council recommended or approved first reading of this item by unanimous vote.
Counsel, questions on item eight, eight? Let's move to item, item eight, nine. It's on page six seventy-six, zone case thirty-four, fourteen.
Case thirty-four, fourteen is again for Beaton Bow Homes. The request is to rezone property from transition to two-family residential district R2. Here we show the subject site outline in orange. It's generally located west of Avenue P and south of 130th Street. On this one, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of, by unanimous vote, and the city council approved first reading also by unanimous vote.
Any questions on eight, nine, counsel? Let's go to item eight, ten. It's on page six eighty-nine, zone case thirty-four, fifteen.
Case thirty-four, fifteen is for MRX NO LLC, represented by AMD Engineering. The request is to rezone property from single-family district R1 to high-density apartment district A2. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located at the northwest corner of Iola and 29th Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and the city council also approved first reading by unanimous vote.
Okay, counsel, any questions on item eight, ten? Let's move to item eight, eleven, page seven oh four, zone case thirty-four, sixteen.
So item, our case thirty-four, sixteen is for Ricky Green, represented by Grayson Harris. The request is to rezone property from transition T to light manufacturing district M1 at 9411th Avenue P. Here we show the subject site outline in orange. It's generally located at the northeast corner of 96th and, I believe, Avenue P. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this vote by, or recommended approval of this item by a vote of four to one, and the city council approved first reading of this case by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, counsel, any questions on item eight, eleven?
I think at the last, when we considered this, that property actually backs up to the county line. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Ison on eight, six, eight, seven, eight, 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 nine, eight, ten, or eight, eleven? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ison. Counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration? Or, you know, how do you want to handle this? And is there, Mr. Looks, Mr. Griffith, looks like you're ready to pull the trigger here.
Thank you. I am. I move to take up item eight point six, eight point seven, eight point eight, eight, eight point nine, eight point ten, and eight point eleven, all as together.
Is that, is that a motion to, is that, take that as a motion to approve those?
Yes.
Counsel, first of all, is that okay with you guys? Okay, is there a second on that?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. So we have a motion and a second to approve items eight, six, eight, seven, eight, 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 nine, eight, ten, and eight, eleven. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor.
Before we.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Joy.
Wanted to, um, uh, thank everyone for showing up on your zone case, AMD Engineering. Appreciate that. We didn't have a question for you. That area out there is developing pretty quickly as a, a lot of apartments. At the same time, we kind of have to watch it. But I do thank you for being here and support, since I said something about it last week, or week before last. But I do think it's important because people do have questions sometimes that we don't anticipate. So thanks for being here.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other comments or questions? Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve items eight, six, eight, seven, eight, 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 nine, eight, ten, and eight, eleven. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same sign? All right, the motion carries seven to zero. Okay, let's move now to item eight, twelve. Before we get a motion on item eight, twelve, let's get briefing from staff. Mr. Ison.
So item eight point twelve is the second reading of an annexation of approximately 72 acres proposed by the Four, Four ECLC Company. The municipal service plan we approved, was approved by city council on August 11th, and then for second, first reading of the actual annexation was approved on August 25th. These next two slides are ones we showed you at the first reading. They show some of the capital improvement projects within the area, as well as the second slide shows you the locations of over 2,300 residential lots that are in development within the local area and the commercial development of Covenant South. And with that, staff, will take any questions?
Okay, counsel, questions for staff on item eight, twelve? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Not so much a question, just to restate, just from last time, to explain how we got here, that this piece is kind of there and what their needs will be from the city. It's no secret that I'm not a fan of annexing.
Sure.
But I, I'm, I'm good with this one because it won't require us to do some things as a result of this piece being annexed. Could you talk a little bit about that for me?
Sure. So this was kind of a holdover piece from, I believe, in 2018. There's already a capital project underway to extend a water line down 50th. So I think we've talked to Cory. They may either extend their water line for a project this to the south, or they may attach to that one that's already going, depending on how the timing falls. But we're not having to do anything. And then the municipal service plan, I believe the majority of departments were able to keep services within existing budgets without having to do any additional work, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was put out there because I have this history.
Good question. Yeah, great, great.
Oh, man, I just want to make, don't want to put any additional cost on the city. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Ison? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ison. Counsel, open the floor for a motion on item eight, twelve.
Move for approval, second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for the motion. Mr. Chides for the second. Is there discussion on item eight, on the motion on item eight, twelve? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, let's move to item eight, thirteen. And let's let Mr. Ison give us a, a final, it's the final item from planning tonight, I believe. So Brian Ison's show will be over after this act. Why don't you brief us on this one, Mr. Ison, and then we'll see if we can get a motion and move through it.
Sure.
Okay. By the way, this is on page seven thirty-eight, item eight, thirteen.
So item eight, thirteen is a request to vary the 300-foot distance regulation for alcohol sales for Ollie's Liquor. They're attempting to open a package store within 300 feet of the Learning Tree Children's Academy on Milwaukee. They're requesting this variance for the following licenses: beer retailers, off-premise, package store, package store tasting, and local cartage. We've reached out to the Learning Tree Children's Academy for their input, including a couple of phone calls today and haven't heard back from them. This location, however, may look very familiar, familiar to you all, as there have been seven different establishments that have requested to reduce those requirements in this area. And they're all, I believe they're all restaurants, but there are seven different establishments that have requested the variance from this one daycare establishment alone.
Okay.
And staff will answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ison. Counsel, questions on, any questions for Mr. Ison on this?
I got a question, Mayor.
Is this?
Mr. Mas, start with Mr. Massengill, and then Ms. Joy.
So thanks for reminding us that, Mr. Ison. Is any of those seven establishments, no, has the daycare center ever opposed any of the applications from this? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Joy?
Uh, is, is this a restaurant and bar combination?
No, this one would be a package store.
It's just a package store. Okay. All right. Thanks.
I'm right here.
Yeah.
And I believe the applicant is here.
Mr. Sein, can you come forward for a minute, please? This is not your first store. You've got at least one other, I know.
Yes, sir.
Tell us a little bit about the way you run your business.
I'm sorry.
Tell us a bit about the way you run your business.
Uh, have owned Ollie's Liquor since 2014.
You're not closing it down, are you?
No, sir.
Okay.
This is, this is going to be the second location.
Mr. Griffith, he protects District Three. I just want to make sure that you weren't closing it down, so.
He was in his business recently.
No, sir. It's, it's an expansion, so.
Excellent. Okay.
I, um, the location, the 7717 Milwaukee, I currently have a lease on it. I had a pizza place there a year ago, which I had to close down. It didn't work out. I'm under a five-year lease obligation.
Okay.
So this is a, kind of one opportunity to see if, you know, I'm paying the rent for it for about five years, to see if this can work.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for being here for tonight. Yeah. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Of all of those requests, this is the first packaged liquor that's been at that location.
Okay.
So it's a little bit different than what it's been before. Am I correct?
Yes. It is totally different, yes. All the other requests, I believe, with the restaurants, they are serving for on-permise consumption, and this is for, this is for a package store to go. So this is a little different.
Where, where's your other location? I don't, I don't, I don't do some of the things that Mr. Griffith does, but.
It's, it's, it is on 34th Street, uh, cross street is Indiana Avenue, right next to Cap Rock Cafe.
Okay, I know, I know where that is, because I just, I just don't know. But there's nothing within that 300 feet from that location, though. Am I correct? There's no daycare?
The current location does not have any of those things, yes.
Okay. I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned this time because it's a packaged alcohol location. So that, that's my concern with it being so close to the Children's Academy. That's my concern, because it's a little bit different, it's a different setup this time.
It is different setup, but I would be more concerned about on-permise consumption versus something that's going home with people.
Yeah, but it could be going around the corner with people, too.
Say what again?
It could be going around the corner with people, too, right?
I would not have any comment on that part. I mean.
What, could, could it be going around the corner?
For us, it's strictly for off-permise consumption.
Still, I'm still a little concerned, because I've, I've watched a lot of the off, the packaged locations.
Well.
And so that, 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 sometimes that concerns me, because I, I know what your intent is, is that people are going to drive up, they're going to put it in the car, drive away, right?
Yes.
But that doesn't always happen, does it?
I would not know that. I personally, myself, don't drink, so I don't know how that works.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you, thank you for being here. Mr. Christian, do you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I do. I, I really do. If I remember right, is that, is that daycare across the street from your location now, across Milwaukee? It's not on the same.
It is on the same side with one lot in between.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Then I was getting mixed up with the other ones. I would say in, in regards to what Ms. Patterson-Harris's concerns are, I really personally have less concerns about a package store than I do a restaurant or bar where alcohol is consumed on the property. Because if, if I'm not mistaken, if somebody could buy some alcohol or, or something from this package store and was caught drinking and driving, that could have some consequences for the package store, just as well as a, a restaurant and bar, if I'm not mistaken. So in some, in some ways, I have less, less concern about a package store than I do a bar or restaurant. And that's, that's just my thoughts. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Thank you, Mr. Sein.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, let's get a motion on this one. I believe, I don't think, I don't think we've gotten a motion yet, right? So is there a motion on item eight, thirteen?
Move for approval, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chides, for the motion, Mr. Griffith for the second. Is there further discussion on, on this alcohol separation variance? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed by the same sign? Motion carries six to one. All right, let's now move to item eight, fourteen. Item eight, fourteen is on page seven forty-nine. We, we're, every year, we're asked to consider a resolution authorizing the approval of the Lubbock Emergency Communication District budget. And it's that time of the year again. So before we get a motion on this, Mr. Koslach has a brief presentation. Counsel, this was emailed to you today, if, if you want to follow along, or follow him on, on the screen.
All right, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. So this is under the Texas Health and Safety Code, section 772 dot 309. The emergency district is required by law to present to you, the governing body, their proposed annual budget. So this is the proposed annual budget for FY '21. Going quickly through this, the, highlighting some of the major changes, I'm, I'm going to skip to the bottom line first, and then I'll, I'll go through some of the line items. The total expenses this year are going to be $3.35 million, as opposed to the fiscal year 2021. as opposed to the fiscal year twenty budget, which was three-point-nine-five million dollars. So almost a six-hundred-thousand-dollar decrease year over year. One of the big increases was in personnel. The emergency district is adding one technician to their staff, so that's, that's what that increase is going to be. The other major increase, thirty-one thousand nine hundred, is in one line item within their budget under repairs and maintenance on the facility, so it could be one project that they're looking at doing for that year. They don't have the specific details on the project. We just see what line item that one is in. Some of the big highlights on the, the decreases, it looks like under PSAP support, which is the Public Safety Answering Point, think about the call centers, the decrease of six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-one-hundred dollars year over year is related to some equipment replacement purchases in FY twenty that are not happening in FY twenty-one. So Mayor, counsel, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Koslach. Ms. Joy?
And you don't know what that thirty-one-thousand-dollar line item is, is? You don't know what it constitutes, what makes it up?
Not, not under what they gave us in the budget. We, we understand that there's a line item for that, and there were some offsets and other line items within the facility maintenance, but as far as a specific repair, no, ma'am, we don't.
Is there someone here who would know that?
Hi, I'm Nathan Kaiser. I'm the executive director of the nine-one-one administration. That is largely, well, what it says, facility building services. It's not just administrative. We run a tier-three data center, which predominantly houses all the nine-one-one traffic and host equipment for the county. Well, not the county, it's the government, but the, the region of the county, and also the city of Plainview. And we also co-locate a lot of equipment there for sister districts across Texas that operate in the same form or fashion as. We do a lot of cost sharing, so that we can kind of bring down those costs for everyone involved.
So the thirty, the increase then would be for ongoing maintenance of that equipment or replacement or some of those type things?
Yes, sir. The facility is about five years old now, so in, in nine-one-one, everything is redundant. We have two of everything, so that's air conditioning, you know, heating, cooling, cleaning, and all that sort of, and, and the addition of a running administrative office.
Ms. Joy, do you have any other questions for Mr. Kaiser?
I don't think so. I'm still not sure what it's for, but maybe it's because I'm not listening well tonight. I don't know.
Now, I'd be happy to elaborate.
Well, it's not about personnel. That's a different line item.
Right.
Correct.
You're referring to building services and maintenance?
Yeah, that's the one that went up by thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
I'd have to pull out our, the, in particulars of our budget, but as far as maintenance goes, a lot of those are revolving, so year to year. Some of those nine-one, some of that nine-one-one equipment falls within that. So in addition to computers, hosts, servers, things, we also have recording units that record all the audio of those calls, all of that maintenance grouped in together, and then the protection of that.
Well, it went up thirty thousand this year, a little over thirty thousand, and so we've got another thirty-one. So they're just, are you telling me they're recurring costs for programs, for replacements? What are you telling me?
I believe it went up thirty-one-nine this, from last year to this year, is what you're saying.
Look on page, Ms. Joy, I think the answer to your question might be on, what page is that on?
Page eight of Mr. Kaiser's proposed budget. It explains the network maintenance and equipment replacement utilizing specialized long-term recorders at each PSAP. And it goes on to say, "The district systematically replaces the uninterruptible power supplies in many of these PSAPs. Several PSAPs have been relocated in dedicated facilities supported by facility-wide UPS."
I guess that's what I...
The district is pursuing a phased approach to replacing the remaining UPS.
And I guess that's what I wanted to hear from him.
Sure, yeah.
Is that correct?
Most definitely. I don't want to get too in the weeds with it, but yes, that, at, at every location, we have a UPS or an uninterruptible power supply, so if utility power drops or anything like that, we can support. A lot of the PSAPs are moving locations. They're either building their own, and a lot of those devices are quite old. So rather than replace them all at once, we're trying to phase them out and then still time them with these relocations, so we're not buying things that don't, don't be, aren't needed.
So we finally got to the answer.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't get too in the weeds, but I did.
Well, I mean, you know, considering that our budgets are tight and everything that we're doing, you know, just wanted to be sure that it was something that we really needed.
Most definitely. I, I will, I will say this, give me just one moment. The industry as a whole is operating on technology from nineteen sixty-eight. There is a push across the country for next-generation nine-one-one. We are doing things here in Lubbock that are not being done many other places yet. We are trying to be as forward-thinking as we can, as well as being conservative with, with that money. So a lot of that push is to move, the nineteen sixty-eight technology is dealing with landline phones, and those make up less than ten percent of the calls we get every year. We are looking to adopt not only wireless phones, but your iPads and your laptops and everything else that's connected to the internet, and to be able to handle those calls and get help to people who are, who are calling on those devices.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kaiser, remind, since you're here, and thank you for being here, remind everyone how your, how your operation is governed, and you've got a board of directors, and we have a little bit of input on that, so I think it's a good, I think it's a good reminder.
It is. We are a bit of an odd duck, I think, at, at times. We, we are created by Health and Safety Code seven seventy-two. We're governed by a board of directors, and those directors represent the largest populations. We have two from the city of Lubbock, one from the county. I'm blanking here for a little bit. We, we have an at-large member. We also have a representative from the largest service provider. We receive our revenue through the small surcharge on your, on your landline bill. That comes directly to us. On your wireless phone, fifty cents goes to the state, and the state remits that out based on population. So we are one-point-one-six percent of the population of Texas, I think, is the latest, and we get that based on that. Is, does that answer your?
Yeah, it does. And my recollection is, Mr. Jack, it's, we have a representative from both Lubbock Fire and Rescue and LPD who serve on that, on that board. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Any other questions for Mr. Kaiser? He thought he can get, sit on the back row and just smile all night, yeah.
It was almost out.
Yeah. Nathan, thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Koslach, you have anything else to add?
Yes, sir.
You're just glad he was here, aren't you?
I'm glad.
Yeah, nobody's happier than you are that Mr. Kaiser was here. Okay, counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration of item eight fourteen?
Motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chatis. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Further discussion on item eight fourteen. All those in favor of the motion to approve item eight fourteen, please say aye.
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 Any opposed by that same sign? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. We've taken care of eight sixteen, so I guess eight fifteen is our final item tonight. This is related to the budget, but it's an item from LPNL, and it has to do with the rate tariff schedule. Looks like Mr. Bircham is here tonight to make a presentation on this. Andy, welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I don't have any PowerPoint tonight, but we'll go quickly through it. The electric rate tariff schedule is actually a document that works in tandem with a budget. Like you said, we call this the tariff for short. It includes some things like the general conditions and terms of service that we provide to our customers. It also includes the rates. That's the biggest part, and that's how it kind of aligns with the budget that you adopted tonight. These are, are how you set the rate, just like how you set the rate through the tax rate ordinance. This resolution will set the electric rates. It also includes some things like service charges and things like the power cost recovery factor, the details of that, and how that is set. So all of that is incorporated within the tariff. In your documents tonight, beginning on page eight eighteen, is a red line that kind of shows some of the changes. There were very few changes this year. As you all know, in our budget, there was no recommendation for a base rate increase. And in fact, we haven't presented a tariff to the council since two thousand seventeen that included a rate increase. And actually, proud to say that today, our average rates for a residential customer are about twenty-three percent lower than they were three years ago, so we're very proud of that. And a lot of that has to do with natural gas being very, very low. We're, we're thankful for that, but also has to do with some new contracts that we've implemented that have saved a lot of money. But in this tariff, you will not see any rate changes, so you don't, normally that takes up most of the red markings on the red line when we do that. A few of the things I did want to just point out, there are some very minor changes throughout, commas, and it fixes things like changes of the address to Citizens Tower. But there's a few, a few things I wanted to comment on. One thing that we did this year, we, which really added some emphasis in one area, this is on page eight twenty-five, related to customer disconnection. There is language in the tariff already, but we wanted to really emphasize that as customers are on a payment plan, that they can avoid disconnection of their services. And this is important because of what we've been going through with COVID and a lot of the folks having difficulties paying their bills. We've been really encouraging folks to set themselves up on a payment arrangement to spread these costs out over a period of time. And so we just really added some emphasis in there, just to make it very, very clear that that payment plan avoids bad results. Also, on page eight sixty-six, pointing out, there is a little bit of a change in wording on the advanced metering. As you know, over the last year, we've been installing advanced meters throughout the city as that project winds down. There was a waiver of fees for opt-out meters during the installation phase over that year. That sentence has been deleted, so beginning in October, if a customer decides they want to have the automated meter removed and a, a old-fashioned meter installed, then there will, there will be a fee for that. Also, on page eight sixty-seven, there is a change to the power cost recovery factor. There was a, a section in that, a part of the tariff, that, where we were going to reserve twenty-four million dollars for a hold harmless payment that will go to South Western Public Service this upcoming year, and that, those funds have been reserved and, and set aside, and so that paragraph has been deleted. The only other thing that is, is probably a little bit more material than those other changes, has to do with what's called a demand cap. In our rate setting, we always try to very fairly charge our customers with basically the cost that they incur on the electric system. And so that, through cost of service study and through our rate modeling, we pass those costs on, where really different rate classes are not subsidizing other rate classes. There's one section that there are, there's still some aspect of that, where some customers are still subsidizing others. And that demand cap has been in place for many, many years. We've been in a process of phasing out that demand cap, and this will be our sixth year of that. It will still take a number of years to get it completely taken care of. But really what it does is it provides a discount on the demand charge for a commercial customer, so they're actually not paying their full usage of electricity that they are consuming. And so as we phase that out, they will ultimately be paying for the full amount of electricity that they're using. And so we're doing it in a manner where it just incrementally unwinds that program and doesn't have a material impact. And in fact, on the demand portion of the current commercial customers' bills, we do not expect to see more than a twenty percent increase in that portion. On average, there's about three hundred and sixty customers that are affected by that. The majority of those are just commercial customers. It's about, about an average of about eleven-dollar change per month in their bill for those customers. On average, though, a hundred and seventy-four dollars to some large, large schools and large municipal accounts that have a little bit larger effect, but still within a twenty percent increase, less than a twenty percent increase there. So that basically covers all of the changes that are included in the tariff for your consideration, and I'll turn it over to you, if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patterson-Harris.
How much longer until that demand cap is zeroed out?
Well, you know, that, it's a moving target a little bit. We, I would anticipate it will be at least three to four more years. We, if you look, if you look several years ago, there were about six hundred customers that were impacted. Today, we have about three hundred and sixty, so we've cut it almost in half, not quite in half, so I can see it winding down. At some point, the numbers become very, very, very small, and so we'll be able to completely phase it out. But that, we, we tried to do it in a, kind of a drawn-out, long-drawn-out process that doesn't materially impact anybody in a given year.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Bircham? All right, thank you, Andy. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration of item eight fifteen?
Motion for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill for the motion, Mr. Griffith for the second. Further discussion on item eight fifteen. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve item eight fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same sign? The motion carries six to zero. Mr. Christian had to sign off for, the motion carries six to zero. Okay. Counsel, I believe that completes our business for the evening. Ms. Garza?
Yes, sir, it does.
Mr. Weaver? I would remind everyone that we will be back again in two weeks on the twenty-second of, of September, and we'll continue the, the work of the city, the good people of Lubbock, Texas. It is six forty-one. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas, and we are adjourned.